So I'll wait, I'll let you start the meeting. Have you, you've started the recording?
Yes.
Okay, this is the Wellfleet Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for April 8th. And I wanted to take a minute just to explain to the audience what's going to happen right now. We have two cases, 2113 and 2114, on which we have already voted. And so the hearings are, those two are closed to any public comment, but the board needs to deal with findings before we go into anything else. And then we will call 2115 and I'll explain what happens then. But for right now, we're calling 2113, which is Great White Realty Group LLC, 1065 State Highway Route 6, applicant appeals pursuant to Massachusetts General Law 40A Section 8, from the Inspector of Buildings, January 14th, 2021, notice to cease, desist, and abate on zoning determination that clearing of applicant's property violates Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.2, permit required, and from zoning determination that the clearing constitutes the listed excluded uses or uses requiring a special permit, open bulk storage, quarry sand pit stripping of topsoil. We, with the, the board for that meeting was Mick, Jan, myself, Manny, and where are you? Mick, Jan, and Trevor. And Manny, and Manny is not with us tonight, but since he's already voted on it, we do not need a substitute for this. We just need, I need a motion to go to findings. Okay. Chris, we're gonna have to unmute, let people unmute themselves, and Trevor has to unmute himself. So Jan, you made that motion?
I'm moved, yes.
Trevor? Did you second it? You have to unmute. Chris, will you let them unmute, please?
Thank you. It said the host wouldn't let me unmute.
Yes.
Yes, I'll second it.
I know. Okay, and all in favor? Trevor, and the host has to let Thelma Blakely unmute. All in favor? Trevor?
Yeah.
Jan?
Yes.
Myself, I, and Mick, I. Okay, so here are the findings. Applicant appeals pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A, Section 8, from the Inspector of Buildings, January 14th, 2021, notice to cease, desist, and abate and zoning determination that the clearing constitutes the listed excluded uses or uses requiring a special permit, open bulk storage, quarry, sand pit, stripping of topsoil. The lot is in the commercial district. The lot consisted of an open foundation for an abandoned storage unit project and fencing, but was otherwise vegetated and unimproved. Applicant intends to lease the property to GFM Enterprises, GFM, for the operation of a contractor's yard, contractor's business. In the operation of its business, GFM intends to store bulk supplies on the property, including steel plates, precast riser, piping, outdoor containers, rebar, and concrete panels.
Sharon, Sharon, you're muted. You're muted.
On with the muted, it's the same.
There you go.
Okay. Where was I? Applicant, GFM.
Gone again.
What?
Oh, your speaker.
Oh, it's not me. It's Chris. The host keeps muting me. Ah. When Chris lets people in, she mutes everybody, I think is what happens. And then it, we always have to keep being unmuted. Okay, the applicant also, GFM also intends to screen loam and topsoil and on the premises for the use, for its use as a building contractor. Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 2.1 defines bulk storage open as exposed outside storage of land, sand, lumber, coal, or other bulk materials or supplies. Pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 5.3.3, bulk storage open requires a special permit in the commercial district. Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 2.1 defines quarry, sand pit, gravel, topsoil stripping as a lot of land or part thereof used for the purpose of extracting stone, sand, gravel, or topsoil for sale or for use at a site removed from said lot, exclusive of the process for grading a lot preparatory to the construction of a building for which application for a building permit had been made and said permit issued. Pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 5.3.3, topsoil stripping is prohibited in the commercial district. In January 2021, applicant began to remove trees from the property and remove soil and grade the property without first obtaining a permit from the building department. On January 14th, 2021, the building inspector issued a notice to cease, desist, and abate to the applicant stating it has come to the attention of the building department that violation of Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.2 permits required and excluded use or allowed by special permit only per the Town of Wellfleet Bylaws Sections 5.3.3. Open bulk storage quarry, sand pit, stripping of topsoil is being conducted at the property located at 1065 Route 6, Wellfleet, Massachusetts. Applicant indicates that the majority of the soil extracted from the property will be used to regrade the property, but any excess soil may be screened and used in the ordinary course of GFM's building contractor business. Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.2.2 states that no use of land or building shall be begun or changed without a permit having been used, issued. Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 4.1.1 states that no building or land shall hereafter be used or occupied, and no building or part thereof shall be erected, moved, or altered unless in conformity with the regulations herein specified for the district in which it is or is proposed to be located. The clearing of land on this site violates the provisions of Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 5.4.219, which notes that not less than 25% of the required front setback, 100 feet, must be maintained with vegetative cover. The clearing has also destroyed the required 35-foot perimeter required in Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 6.12.1. Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 5.3.3 prohibits the stripping of topsoil in all districts except as necessary for grading a lot preparatory to the construction of a building for which the application for a building permit has been made. And soil. The use of soil extracted from property for the use in a contractor's business violates Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 5.3.23, rather. Applicant also intends to screen loam and topsoil on the property. This proposed use conforms to the definition of industry light, and thus requires a special permit. Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 2.1 defines industry light as fabrication, assembly, processing, finishing work, or packaging in such a manner that noise, dust, odor, vibration, or similar objectionable features are confined to the premises or in no way objectionable to the abutting property. Pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 5.3.2, industry light requires a special permit in the commercial district. The board finds that the applicant's proposed use of site requires a special permit for the bulk storage open and light industry. The applicant has not applied for any permits or special permits for land use and has not submitted adequate building or site plans. Therefore, the cease and desist order is upheld. I'm done. I need a motion to approve the findings.
I'll make a motion to approve the findings.
I need a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Mick?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
And Sharon?
Aye.
Okay, and that's it, because we had already decided that we were upholding the order. So this was just the paperwork to, to do the findings, correct Jonathan? We don't need a further, okay. All right, good. All right, moving on then to 2114. You guys are definitely going to read letters before me, because I'm gonna run out of my voice much earlier than that. 2114, Great White Realty Group, I'm just gonna read it from here. Applicant appeals pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Section 408A, Section 8, from the Inspector of Buildings, February 11th and February 22nd, determination that the applicant's proposed permitted contractor's yard use requires special permits for bulk storage open and for industry light for open storage of sand, loam, T-base, and stone, and screening of topsoil. Applicants grading of the property for permitted contractor's yard use requires a permit from the Inspector of Buildings. The lot is in the commercial district. The lot consisted of an open foundation for an abandoned storage unit project and fencing, but was otherwise vegetated and unimproved. Applicant intends to lease the property to GFM Enterprises for the operation of a contractor's yard and contractor's business. In the operation of its business, GFM intends to store bulk supplies on the property, including steel plates, precast riser, piping, outdoor containers, rebar, and concrete panels, sand, loam, T-base, and stone. GFM also intends to screen loam and topsoil on the premises for its use as a building contractor. Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 2.1 defines contractor's yard as premises used by a building contractor or subcontractor principally for storage and equipment of supplies, fabrication, or assemblies, or parking of wheeled equipment. Pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 5.3.2, contractor's yard is allowed as of right in the commercial district. Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 2.1 defines bulk storage open as exposed outside storage of sand, lumber, coal, or other bulk materials or supplies. Pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 5.3.3, bulk storage open requires a special permit in the commercial district. Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 2.1 defines industry light as fabrication, assembly, processing, finishing work, or packaging in such a manner that noise, dust, odor, vibration, or similar objectionable features are confined to the premises and are in no way objectionable to the abutting property. Pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 5.3.2, industry light requires a special permit in the commercial district. Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 2.1 defines quarry, sand pit, gravel pit, topsoil stripping as a lot of land or part thereof used for the purpose of extracting stone, sand, gravel, or topsoil for sale or for use at a site removed from said lot, exclusive of the process of grading a lot preparatory to the construction of a building for which application for a building permit had been made and said permit issued. Pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 5.3.3, topsoil stripping is prohibited in the commercial district. Pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 5.4.13, more than one allowed principal use or principal building may be permitted on a lot in Districts Commercial, District C and C2 with a special permit granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals in accordance with Section 8.4.2 of the Wellfleet Zoning Bylaws. The applicant intends to use the property for storage of contractor's equipment and supplies. The applicant also proposes to store sand, loam, T-base, and stone in open storage. The proposed use conforms to the definition of bulk storage open, and thus requires a special permit. Applicant also intends to screen loam and topsoil on the property. This proposed use conforms to the definition of industry light, and thus requires a special permit. Since the proposed bulk storage and screening uses require special permits, the Inspector of Buildings, February 11th and February 21st, 2021, determination that the applicant is required to obtain a bulk storage open and industry light special permits is upheld. In January 2021, applicant began to remove trees from the property and remove soil and grade the property without first obtaining a permit from the building department. On January 14th, 2021, the building inspector issued a cease and a notice to cease and desist and abate to the applicant stating it has come to the attention of the building department that the violation of Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.2 permits required and excluded use or allowed by special permit only per the Town of Wellfleet Bylaws Sections 5.3.3. Open bulk storage quarry, sand pit, stripping of topsoil is being conducted at the property located at 1065 Route 6, Wellfleet, Mass. Applicant indicates that the majority of the soil extracted from the property will be used to regrade the property, but any excess soil may be screened and used in the ordinary course of GFM's building contractor business. Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.3.2.2 states that no use of land or building shall be begun or changed without a permit having been issued. Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 4.1.1 states that no building or land shall hereafter be used or occupied, and no building or part thereof shall be erected, moved, or altered unless in conformity with the regulations herein specified for the district in which it is or is proposed to be located. The use of soil extracted from the property for use in a contractor's business violates Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 5.3.3. The applicant has not applied for any permits or special permits for land use and has not submitted adequate building or site plans. Therefore, the Building Inspector of Buildings, February 11th and February 21st, 2021, determination that the applicant is required to obtain a permit for the grading of the property is affirmed. I need a motion to accept those findings.
Make a motion to accept the findings.
I need a second. All in favor? Mick?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Okay, we're done with those, which allows us then to move on to 2115. Great White Realty Group LLC, State Highway Route 6, application for special permit under, well, Massachusetts General Law 40A, and those others you've already heard a million times, for bulk storage, open for storage of land, sand, loam, T-base, and stone, and for industry light for screening of topsoil in the commercial zoning district, and a special permit pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 5.4.13 for multiple principal uses in the commercial zoning district, i.e. contractor's yard bulk storage open and industry light. This is continued, however, the original board was Mick, Jan, Trevor, myself, and Manny. And Manny cannot be with us tonight, and therefore Andy is taking the place. And Andy, you need to read your affirmation.
And Al, and anybody else on the board that isn't unmuted.
Yeah, I'll unmute. Okay, yeah. With the unmute, Andy. Chris, we need to unmute Andy. There he is, and probably Al is though.
Yeah, unmute Al.
Yeah, unmute Al as well.
You want me to read this?
Yeah, I'd like you to read it into the record, yes.
I, Andrew Freeman, hereby do swear and certify under the penalty of perjury as follows. One, I am a member of the Town of Wellfleet Board of Appeals. Two, I was present for, but was not named as a member of the voting panel for the hearing on the matter of the application of Great White Realty Group, appealing determinations by the Inspector of Buildings of a notice of cease and desist, parentheses, application number 21-13, and appealing the Inspector of Buildings determination that the proposed use requires a special permit, applicating parentheses, application 2114, end of parentheses, at 1065 State Highway, parentheses, Route 6, and parentheses, which was held on March 25th, 2021. On 2000, sorry, March 25th, 2021, I participated in that hearing on the above applications by listening to the presentation and asking questions. I examined all the evidence and heard all the testimony received at the hearing sessions held on said date. Four, on April 6th, 2021, I was named as a member of the voting panel on application number 21-15 by Great White Realty Group, seeking a special permit for multiple principal uses at 1065 State Highway, parentheses, Route 6, and parentheses, including open storage, industry light, and contractor's yard in place. Well, I don't know how this is, but in place of another member who was absent. Solidification shall be, become part of the record of the proceedings in the above matter, signed under pains and penalties, perjury, this 7th of April, 2021.
Thank you, Andy. I think now we've covered all our bases on that one. Okay, now to the audience, I'm going to go to the applicant, and then I will go to the audience. We have muted everybody, and we mute everybody, including half the board half the time, but we're working on it. If you want to speak, you have to raise your hand. You will go to the top of the list, and we using a smartphone to raise your hand, you touch the bottom of your screen and select more, hit raise hand button, and you're in. If you're in a computer, you hit the participants button on the bottom of the screen, hit raise hand button on the bottom of the participants panel. Emmy, you have to be sure to state your name. Now, I did want to say that we probably won't, we will not call on people we've already heard from. In the interest of time, we will also not read letters we read last time. We do have a number of letters to read, and we will try, try to make sure everybody gets to be heard. But also, we need some time for the board to also ask questions, so. With that, I will begin, and I will turn to you, Mr. Zander. Wherever you are. Chris, you're probably gonna have to be busy unmuting people like crazy, but.
You gotta unmute Ben.
You gotta unmute Ben, wherever he is. There he is.
Good evening.
Okay.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
For the record, my name is Ben Zander, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Great White. And I have sort of two procedural issues to discuss first. First of all, David Reed was not able to be present at the last hearing, and he has not had an opportunity to weigh in on the first two applications that the board's already heard. I know you've already voted. But before you move on to the special permit, I didn't know whether the chair wanted to afford him an opportunity to make a comment as he wasn't able to be there. That's the first question for the chair.
I, I don't.
Okay.
I don't know that we need to. I think these issues are so intertwined. Mr. Reed, I will ask you, but I think that, you know, we've pretty much set the stage for where we are now.
I, just as a courtesy to my brother, I didn't want to, I didn't want
Of course, of course.
Keep rolling along.
Yeah.
The second matter, just as a procedural discussion, is I understand the board's findings and votes on the prior application to mean that a special permit is required for the bulk storage open.
Right.
At the last hearing, we removed from consideration from the board screening of loans. So we're not seeking approval for screening of loans. So we're not seeking a special permit for processing of materials. But I read the Building Inspector's determination, and I think I heard in this board's determination on the appeal that the contractor's yard that we've presented itself in and apart from the bulk storage does not require a special permit. Is, was that a correct interpretation of the board's action that I heard?
Well, as you know, contractor's yard is is allowed by right in the commercial district, but we have yet to see enough plans to determine that this is a contractor's yard.
Okay, well, at the last hearing, we, I mean, we submitted, and I can read again, you know, what was presented to the Building Inspector, what was presented to this board in the application. We described the operation, I thought, in fairly great detail, including the number of vehicles to be on the property, the equipment that we showed, a plan showing the storage areas, we showed where the equipment is to be parked. I'm not sure what other information we could present to the board to demonstrate. I am just trying to understand, as I present this application for a special permit, is the board intending that I have to apply for a special permit for something in and apart from the bulk, the bins, and the handling of the materials, the bulk storage materials? Or is the board asking that I present an application for a special permit for the, for example, the, the parking of the one-ton trucks, the skid steers, the excavator, the container storage, the, you know, all of the other, the precast risers, all of the equipment that's used in connection with Greg Morris's operation? I just need to understand what exactly the board's position is, whether, what I'm applying for. The reason being, if the board's position is that we need to present an application for a special permit for GFM Enterprises' excavating business in and apart from the storage bins, you know, I just need that to be clear in the record. I can go forward on both, in both directions. I don't mind doing that.
I will turn to my fellow board members.
Well, we're we're still trying to establish what this, what, what this special permit, what we're trying to establish what is or isn't the contractor's yard regarding the application in front of us. We haven't gone that far yet.
Yeah, Jan?
Agreed with, with Mick. I don't know that in light, industry light just relates to the, the screening of the loam and the topsoil. I mean, I'm very unclear as to what exactly, what else is going to be going on here, and I have a lot of questions about that.
Okay, Trevor?
Um, yeah, I guess I'd be interested in hearing from Ben as to, as to a little more as to exactly what's now being planned. I know that if they, in my opinion, if they, if they're not going to do the screening of materials, then that takes industry light off the table. And I also am of the opinion that a contractor's yard, well, I don't think it's an opinion. I think it's pretty, pretty black and white. A contractor's yard is allowed by right without any, without any special permits or any, anything required to do that. And I believe that storing trucks and equipment and those sorts of things are the definition of a contractor's yard. I sort of agree with Ben on the, the plan that's been submitted. If, if, you know, a contractor's yard, by definition, is, is something that is going to be a little bit in flux. It's a piece of lands that you're storing trucks and equipment on, and you're not necessarily going to park the truck in the exact same spot every day. So I think, you know, yet, they have submitted a plan that shows the, the general location of parked vehicles and the general location of stored equipment. And I'm not sure how much more specific they could, they could get than that. So I don't, I don't know, unless they're planning to do something, we don't know. But I don't know what else they could show on here. And, and I guess the last thing I'll say is that I do believe that bulk storage is the, is the only thing that would need a special permit, based on what I've heard. And I think we could certainly have a discussion about that and, and either approve it or deny it with, or approve it with conditions. But as far as I'm concerned, that's the only thing that require a a special permit.
And Andy?
Yeah, I'm not sure that I agree with Ben insofar as what I understand is going to be parked there are more than just wheeled equipment. I believe some of these pieces of equipment don't have any wheels. I don't know exactly what the definition of wheeled equipment is. Somebody can enlighten me on that, but as far as I know, we've got some pieces of equipment that do not have wheels, rather they have tracks, or whatever you call them. So I'm not sure that that gets those pieces of equipment into that, under that definition.
Through you, Madam Chairperson. That's, it's kind of what the whole hearing is about, really. And I think we're jumping the gun.
Right.
I understand Ben's question, and it's fine, but I, I'd like to see Attorney Reed unmuted and allow Attorney Reed to maybe put his, after Ben has his say, have Attorney Reed speak, because we're discussing what the, basically what their, both their opinions are on this.
Right. I tend to agree with you, Mick. Then I don't know if that's an answer to you, but that's
Well, Madam Chairperson, if I may.
Yeah.
If I may, look, the Building Inspector presented an opinion, and, and I can read it for the board. You all have it.
Right.
But his opinion was that a special permit was required for bulk storage open.
Right.
And for industry light, and I believe that was for the processing.
Right.
The purpose of the last hearing the board just held, the appeal of the Building Inspector, was to determine whether or not the Building Inspector was correct and what was required.
Right.
And so part of that would have been a determination by this board as to what permit is required. I presented to the board a detailed explanation of, of what GFM Enterprises' operation was. We presented a site plan that showed the locations. We presented a list of the equipment to be used and parked, and we explained exactly how the, and what materials were to be stored. I believe that the Building Inspector's interpretation, his own determination, was that a contractor's yard is permitted as of right. What you've described is a contractor's yard, but if you want to add those bins that store the topsoil, the loam, the stone, you're going to need to get a special permit for bulk storage open. And if you want to process loam, you're going to have to get a special permit for, for light industry. So as we present this going forward, I, I don't think we ask the board to vary or disagree with the Building Inspector's interpretation. I just want to make sure when I present this, that the board understands that we believe that what we need to present to you is a special permit application that discusses the operation of bulk storage open, meaning you need to have a front-end loader on the site. The trucks are going to come in, and the, and the materials will get loaded into or out of those trucks, and the materials will leave the site, and where those materials are located, how they're screened, et cetera. I don't believe that the board should be mixing into that. The contractor's yard itself, which is the, you know, when the employees come in and pick up a 10-wheel dump truck, and they go to the site during the day, and they come back at the end of the day, and they park that dump truck, or if they pick up some risers, or they pick up a storage container, and they, and they leave the site with it, and they go to a residence or a business, and they undertake their work, and then come back again. I believe the only thing that I believe the only thing that this board should be considering is what are the effects under your zoning bylaw of the operation of bulk storage open? I don't think that because you add that to a contractor's yard that somehow makes the contractor's yard itself subject to all this review because the contractor's yard is permitted as a right. And so if the board wants me to make the presentation about the whole operation, then I'm happy to do that. I just want the board to understand what I believe the building inspector said and what I believe the import of your decision was. It's a muddy question and I appreciate that, but you know, I don't think that we should be kicking and screaming to get permission and have heavy conditioning on a contractor's yard that we wouldn't be in front of this board for in the first place. And that, and that's essentially my explanation of the overview. Thank you.
Can we unmute Al, please? Al Muller?
Yeah, unmute Al. Eventually you'll get unmuted, Al. Chris, can you unmute Al, please?
Yeah. Oh, thank you. So, Madam Chairman, last week, again, I asked, you know, a question, you asked me to hold it. And perhaps it's premature to discuss this issue, but I'm still confused about who designated this as industry light versus industry heavy? Because it's quite clear from the definition of industry light that this operation that is proposed here, you know, doesn't meet industry light requirements. And I just thought I'd raise that because I thought that's what we were going to be discussing today.
I think the question, the thing is they're taking the screening of the loam off the table and saying they will not do that. On the, they're not asking for a permit to do that, which is why the industry light or heavy is off the table and so we're on to the bulk storage. And I think what the attorney for the applicant is.
But how does that? You know, it says here for industry light, finishing work or packaging in such a manner that noise, dust, odor, vibration or similar objectionable features are confined to the premises and are in no way objectionable to abutting property. It's clearly, clearly objectionable to abutting property, you know, based on the numerous, you know, letters that we've received from abutters and, and other interested parties in the neighborhood.
Right. That would be true, but that would be confined to the question of the screening of the loam, which the applicant says they are not going to do. They're not, no longer asking for a permit for, for the screening of the loam. Now, the other question of the bulk storage and what that means is, and what that would constitute, whether that's appropriate for the site, is something that I think this board does need to discuss.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think that to answer your question, Ben, no, I don't think we are saying you have to present a defense of a contractor's yard. But certainly you do have to argue a permit for bulk storage light. And there is a question in many of our minds about, given what is being proposed for the site, whether those vehicles constitute a contractor's yard? Because they don't have wheels.
I can address that now if the board doesn't mind. You know, the definition for a contractor's yard, and I'll read it. I'll read my own handwriting. It's secondhand, so it's probably already incorrect, but its premises used by a building contractor or subcontractor principally for storage of equipment and supplies, fabrication of subassemblies or parking of wheeled equipment. Now, you have to remember that to the extent that equipment is not wheeled, like let's say, for example, a skid steer, a bobcat, it will be on a trailer, which is wheeled. So I don't think the intention of the bylaws to say that if a, a piece of equipment of the same size is, has tracks versus wheels, it's different. If somebody wanted to bring in a bulldozer or, you know, a large crane or something like that, maybe that might be arguable, but what we're talking about is equipment that the applicant brings in on a trailer, parks on the trailer overnight. If they need that particular equipment, the next day they come in, they hook it up, they haul it out, they take it to the job and they bring it back. So I think even if it's on skids, it's still, it's on trailers, which would put it in the same same category as a front-end loader, one-ton trucks, 10-wheelers, all of the other equipment. It's still equipment that's intended to be used for the building contractor offsite for, for the building trades.
So did I answer your question about what it is that you're presenting?
I think you did. My own sense is I don't think we're going to be able to separate, you know, the cream from the milk here. It's not, I'll present the whole application to the board and let you consider it. I think the board should understand that, you know, i- if this is appealed in some way, then obviously we're going to be arguing that the board should only be considering the effects of, of the bulk storage. And I'll try to separate the descriptions out, but if, if the chair doesn't mind, I'll just make a brief presentation and then, and then let you go from there. Would that, would that help to move this along?
That would, that would help to move us on.
Okay, so the board has a site plan that shows the proposed locations for and the site plan shows the entirety of the lot. It shows a, an old foundation which is going to remain, which, you know, it's possible in the future the board may see some application for some use of that building. We don't know. It has an area where storage containers will be stored. Those storage containers go offsite to job sites, they come back. It is an area where, where a front, an excavator and a loader is stored. That's the excavator loader that would, that would move the bulk materials in and out of the storage bins to the trucks and vice versa. There's a proposed parking area for the, for the trucks. And then there are two storage areas, one along the, the west side of the property and one along the east side of the property, where materials will be stored and those materials will be again, you know, bulk piles of topsoil and clean fill and gravel and mulch and, and different types of stone for putting in the septic systems, whether it's three-quarter inch native or half-inch native or whatever type of stone that they use for that. The applicant will use the site to store the trucks, two one-ton trucks, two 10-wheelers, a couple of skid steers, an excavator, a tilt-top trailer, a large tilt-top trailer, a front-end loader. Those will come to the site and they'll be parked there as a yard. And then when the, in the morning, employees of the contractor, one or two employees are anticipated at this point, will come in, they'll park their personal vehicles, they'll pick up the equipment, they'll drive to the job site. They'll do what they have to do at the job site and at the end of the day, they'll bring the equipment back, they'll park it and they'll go home. And the reason for this is so that this equipment doesn't have to drive from Dennis to Truro every day or to Provincetown or to Waltham every day and come through the various towns and, and go back and forth and have the fuel consumption and the road wear and the vehicle wear that would occur if you stored them further away from the job sites. Additionally, because this is an excavating business that installs septic systems and does landscaping and, and clears lots and does various things, there are, there are materials that are used and supplies that are used in connection with this. They use steel plates, small precast risers, piping, rebar, concrete panels, you know, which are, are supplies used in connection with the building trades which be stored on site. And additionally, there are consumable materials that are used in their business. Both materials that are removed from job sites, that would be fill coming from a, fill coming from a job site that is then put into a pile or, or a container, a bin on the site. There will be materials that are delivered to the site to be used consumables, you know, from up cave, you know, T-bays and stone. And then they will remove those materials from the bins, they'll load them into their trucks and they'll take them to the job sites where they'll use those materials and then they'll bring the equipment back and store them on the site. So that's, and I think the, I think the, you know, the plan is very clear. The plan also contains notes and locations of the vegetative plantings that are, that are designed to meet the requirements of the bylaw in terms of screening along Route 6 for vegetative cover. If the board wants some additional screening, we can certainly talk about that. And if the board wants some fencing in different locations, we're fine to come back with a plan that, that provides additional fencing for those uses. The use that we're seeking the special permit for is bulk storage. And as the board is aware, you know, your zoning code has use tables. And those use tables have a number of zoning districts. You have the central district, you have the residential one district, the residential two district, the national seashore park district, the commercial district and the C2 district. The commercial district is the most intensive zoning district in the town of Waltham. It is the one that, that contains either permitted as of right or by special permit, the most intensive uses that are permitted in the town. And looking at a zoning map, which you don't have to look at now, but I'll describe it to you, there were six zoning districts in the town of Waltham. The first one is the Waltham Drive-In parcel, just happens to be a zoning district. Thank you very much. The second one is the west side of Route 6 from Lieutenant Island Road to Old Wharf Road. And it's roughly one lot deep in that one area. So it starts at the, at the north side of Lieutenant Island Road. It runs through, you know, the pizza place, the old gas station, VR's restaurant and ends up at Old Wharf Road. The next zoning district starts at the entrance to the South Waltham General Store and runs as far as the Blackfish Market on the north side of Route 6 at that point, roughly one lot deep. The next commercial district is essentially the the Dunkin' Donuts building, you know, the old First National. That's a zoning district. And the reason for that is because when they wrote the zoning code back in 50s, they kind of wrapped lines around places that were already commercially used. The next zoning district runs from Pine Point Road through the mobile station on the west side of Route 6. And the final zoning district starts at the railroad tracks where they come out under Route 6 by Charlie Anthe's building and runs along the east side of Route 6 up as far as Old Long Pond Road, again, roughly one lot deep. So there, there are no commercial districts that are in, in residential neighborhoods. There are no commercial districts downtown. There's a central district instead. There are no commercial districts in the national seashore. There are, the only commercial zoning districts are roughly one lot deep running along Route 6. Those are the only areas in town where this particular use, bulk storage open is permitted, this and the C2 district. And a contractor's yard, the commercial district is the only district that where it's permitted. So clearly the voters of Waltham intended that these, these uses be confined to these particular areas. And the board is aware, from what I just described of those areas, most of those commercial districts are already developed. And so there is very little commercial land available for exactly this type of use. Now, this use is a good use for Waltham. It allows for employment for people who work in Waltham. It allows for quick and ready access to the building trade, to Waltham, Truro and possibly even Provincetown without having to go through Eastham to haul materials back and forth. It provides for local access of, for homeowners to, to septic system repair and all of these things. So it's, it's a, it's a good use. The bulk storage of materials from an intensity of use standpoint is a relatively light use. You have to remember, this is not a retail establishment that's operating for 10 or 12 hours a day. Employees come in, they remove the vehicles. They may come back during the day to drop a load of sand or stone. They may, they may pick up a load of sand or stone, but those activities are relatively short in time duration. This is not a, you know, a materials yard that sells retail to the public, so it's not going to be loading trucks on an ongoing basis. It's not, you know, the public, there's no ability of the public to come in and purchase materials. So this is only for the internal private use of this excavator to store the materials and to move those materials on and offsite. The materials don't in the, of themselves, other than being loaded, they don't generate noise. They don't generate light, they don't generate dust. They don't require any septic use, they don't require any water use. This is a, essentially, other than the time that the vehicles are coming and going at the beginning and end of the day and at the time that they're either removing or depositing the bulk materials. It's essentially a passive use of a piece of property. So it's a, it's a use that is needed in our construction trade. By taking this land away from this type of use, you're driving up the available, availability of land and the cost of land for contractors locally. You all know that C2 land for service trades is extremely rare and hard to find and expensive. So, you know, this is probably one of the only areas in town where this use is intended. And it's probably one of the only areas in town where this use is appropriate. So there is only one residential use adjacent to this property. It's a, it's a four-uniconder that's seasonal in nature. It can't be occupied between, between November and April. And so, and, and in terms of traffic, the board has a plan that shows a curb cut that's roughly 200 feet south of Route, of Old Wharf Road. There were certain problems with Old Wharf Road, getting in and out of it, but those problems are endemic to Old Wharf Road and they're endemic to the highway generally. This project is not going to generate a significant amount of traffic for this particular use. It's not a use which falls under a development of significant impact because, because the parking requirements are low for this. And so I'm hoping the board will understand that although people may not like the idea of a contractor's yard and bulk storage along Route 6 where their entrance to their road and their homes is, it's one of the only places in town that it is appropriate and it certainly would not be substantially more detrimental than any other use of this property. And thank you for your time and I'll answer any questions that you have.
I think we'll go to the audience now.
Madam Chairperson, could we hear from, can we unmute Attorney Reed and let's hear his presentation? Because he'll probably cover what a lot of the audience would anyway.
Right, that makes sense.
In the interest of moving along.
Sure. Okay, so Chris, if you could unmute Attorney Reed so that he can present for and I'm assuming Attorney Reed, that means we don't have to read your letter. You're going to present it.
Correct. Can you hear me? I think I'm unmuted now.
Yes, you're unmuted.
Yep, you're good to go.
Thank you. May I say, Madam Chair, first of all, I can't hear most of what you're saying. I can hear the voice, but not the volume, so.
Okay, I'll try to get that up.
Thank you. Again, by way of introduction, I am Attorney David Reed in South Yarmouth and I represent a good deal of the neighbors to this property. I want to first thank the board and Mr. Zender and his client for your courtesy at the last meeting when I was unable to be here. I am pleased to be able to address you tonight. I did have a chance to view the video of the last meeting, so I'm up to speed on what you have already discussed and I will try very hard to pick up where you left off. As you've indicated, you have a letter from me of March 22 that addressed all three applications. As you have closed the hearings on the first two, I will not address those. I would however ask that the entire letter be considered part of your record. And as you indicated, Madam Chair, it need not be read into the record as far as I'm concerned. I assume you all had a chance to review it and, and try to understand some of the arguments. Addressing application number 21-15. I, I represent now a total of 88 households who are opposed to this project. There were 74 names and addresses on my original letter. More people have joined the group, the informal group since that time. And I can provide an updated list if you wish, but I think 77 is, 74, I think, on the original list is a pretty good sampling of the neighborhood. The application before you seeks two use special permits. I understand Mr. Zender has some question about whether or not he needs both of them and in fact, they were both filed sort of under, under reservation of rights that he didn't think he needed either initially. I believe that based upon his presentation this evening as well as the last meeting, it's agreed by the applicant that the bulk storage portion of the business does require a special permit in addition to the contractor's yard that they believe is permitted by right. Last meeting and, and I guess again tonight, everyone is struggling with exactly what pigeonhole to put the business, what category under the use table this belongs in. And I think part of the answer to that question and part of the solution to that dilemma is to keep in mind that any single business can qualify at one time for more than one category use. The definition of principal use, which is what the use table regulates, is any use listed in the table, section 4, 5.3. So if a use is listed in section 5.3 in the table of uses, it is by definition a principal use and must meet the bylaws requirements applicable to that category. So each must stand or fall on its own, even though they're all used in conjunction with one enterprise. So I'd like to address the different categories that may apply and decide whether or not they fit and whether or not they either are allowed or should be allowable. The first category obviously is a contractor's yard. And as Mr. Zender indicated in his definition, it is a use, a premises used by a building contractor or subcontractor principally for storage of equipment and supplies, fabrication of subassemblies or parking of wheeled equipment. That is a rather general category, fairly broad. But I would suggest also fairly passive. The emphasis of the principal activities being storage and parking of equipment and vehicles. Not the active manipulation of materials, not processing of materials, not preparing of materials for use elsewhere, but simply storage and parking of materials and equipment. As I understand what's proposed to this site, it's considerably more active than that. The site, I, I understand from Mr. Zender uh, will, uh, contain a number of different categories of materials, sand, gravel, aggregate, concrete, steel, uh, materials to be used in, in construction. Um, different kinds of sands, different kinds of stone, all sorted out and put in bins or piles throughout the site until they're needed. And the source of those materials seems to be perhaps their own principal site in Dennis, if that's where they have them and manufacture them or process them. Uh, perhaps directly from suppliers, if they're purchasing, say, tea base or clean sand from somebody else for their use and resale. Uh, and, and as indicated, sometimes being brought here by the, the tenant from his customer sites. And that might be waste material if it's, if it's excess or something that can't reuse. Uh, it might very well be material that they'll put in their bins and use either back at the site or at another site at a later date. But to me, that and the utilization of those materials is far more active than just passive parking and storage, which is what the principal activity is for a contractor's yard, for work to be done offsite. Because to, to use these materials, they've got to sort them out among the bins. They gotta pile them up in the, in the, uh, piles of loose material like the sand and, and gravel that's out there now. And they've got to do something with the materials they bring to the site from the customer's side. Some of it may be waste material that they then have to figure out where to ship it off to. Some of it may be processable at another location into a different material. And some of it may just be integrated into what they already have themselves and can reuse at a later date. The, the question of wheeled equipment versus tracks. We don't know exactly what's going to be there. Uh, the applicant provided a list and I provided to you a, a page of photographs of such equipment, but not all the applicant's own equipment. The top two or three are taken from their website in South Dennis. But they are what I think he means and what he's described as the types of equipment that's going to be stationed here. And I don't think it's all going to be just parked here and then moved to a construction site. It's going to be used here on site. The skid steers and the excavators and the front end loaders are not just going to be used at a customer's site, they're going to be used here, I think. I mean, how are you gonna, uh, how else are you going to move tons of sand and gravel and stone around to organize them in the piles that you need to separate them from the piles that you don't want them to be integrated into? To, uh, add and to take from them as you need on a daily basis without using this heavy equipment on site. And that's not storage, that's use on the site. And I don't believe that, that component of it is what a contractor's yard is intended to be. So what else do we have here? We, we do have open bulk storage. I think the applicant agrees to that. Uh, and as I said, we've got open bulk storage of a wide variety of materials coming from a wide variety of different sources and sites. All to be accumulated here and somehow sorted out amongst these bins and areas and piles. Uh, I don't, I'm not sure despite, uh, Ben's description and the what I would describe as a rather scant site plan. I'm not sure how this is all going to be organized. We have open piles of materials and apparently that's going to continue to some degree. We've referred to some bins and containers where these things are going to be, uh, stored and, and, and handled on site. I suppose I would envision and, and I'm sure Ben can tell me if I'm wrong. Those, uh, gray concrete block bins that most construction, uh, yards and, and material yards set up from time to time uh, to contain different materials and to keep them separate from, from incompatible materials. Uh, and each of those is going to contain one substance or one category, uh, of material. So the bulk storage, again, clearly is allowed and clearly requires a special permit from you. Now of the industrial activities that the building commissioner envisioned, I don't think his correspondence was intended by him and I, I don't know if he's on tonight or not, but I heard his presentation last time. I don't think it was his analysis that the only thing mentioned that could be industrial use and therefore required a permit was the singular activity of screening loam. Uh, I think the other activities that were described to him in the conversations with the tenant and with the owner and in his exchanges of email with Mr. Zender, uh, indicated to him that other types of processing of material, which is the, the key words in the definition of industry or industrial use, uh, were also likely to be included in his business other than simply processing loam. Uh, I don't think eliminating that while it's, it's helpful and while it eliminates one of the more potentially offensive activities necessarily takes everything else out of the category of industrial use. Now the definition of an industry or industry light in section two point one is the fabrication, assembly, processing, finishing work, packaging of any object or material. The key words that we've identified and, and focused on so far is the processing of material. And I think that's probably the, the type of industrial use which is most likely to be involved in this activity. Again, I share the concerns from a couple of the members who have spoken so far that I'm not sure we have an entirely clear picture on what's going to happen here. Partly because it hasn't happened yet, but partly because these, the site plan is rather generic in terms of what's going to happen and where. There are no, uh, depictions of what these bins or containers are, how big they're going to be, where they're going to be located, how much material they're going to contain and what else is going to happen on site. I have the greatest respect for Mr. Zender and I'm sure the board does too. But given the track record of this site in the very recent past, I'm not so sure it's appropriate for the board to simply trust that everything will work out and the details will, will come to light in the future. I think you need to know and be satisfied that you know exactly what's going to happen here if any of these permits are granted. I think that what has been described by Mr. Zender and my humble interpretation of what he's described and what I envisioned here does constitute industrial use. I think bringing materials here from multiple sources, perhaps their own site in Dennis, perhaps their suppliers of, of new material, raw material. And clearly the removal of materials from their customers' sites to this here, either as reusable materials or as waste material to be processed and disposed of elsewhere. When that all gets there, the sorting out of the materials, piling it up where it needs to be piled up, organizing it into bins so they can be used at a later date, getting it ready to be used and reused offsite. That all sounds to me like, quote, processing of materials. It's not simply bulk storage as you would see, for example, in a wholesale or retail setting. They are actually bringing materials here and in my interpretation of the word, processing them to be ready to be used for other purposes at other locations. That to me is within the category of industrial use. Whichever categories you envision these activities to fall into. I'm going to suggest to you that there are actually five steps that you need to go through in order to get to the bottom line of whether any or all of them are allowed at the site. And this is not any magic list. I, I, this is just my analysis of the bylaw and what applies to this category of use or uses and how you get to your final determination. The first step we've already done, uh, that is to go to the use table to understand what's proposed.
Sorry to interrupt, but you have an appointment soon.
Thank you. Let me just shut that off as well. To go to the use table, section five point three. And I think we've so far identified and uh, probably sufficiently identified the categories of contractor's yard, which is, as stated, allowed by right if the activity meets the definition of contractor's yard. Bulk storage, which requires a special permit by everyone's definition. Industry light, which again, if it meets the definition is allowable by special permit. And industry heavy if it doesn't meet the definition of industry light. So I think the second, second step in your analysis for a commercial use such as this is to look at section six point seven. And Madam Chair, if, if the members don't have that all before them, I, I tried to provide some isolated pages of the bylaw that you perhaps could uh, display or share on the screen if that helps anybody.
I think they have it, but does anyone, does anyone need to see that one?
I got it.
Section six point seven.
Okay.
Sets forth standards for all commercial and industrial uses. And it says in part, quote, "No activity shall be permitted in any district of the town unless its operation is conducted so that any noise, vibration, flashing, cinders, dust, fumes, gas, smoke, radiation or electromagnetic interference can be and are effectively confined to the premises." That applies to all commercial and industrial uses, no matter which category you put it into. We don't believe that that standard is going to be met. We believe that the piling up of sand and gravel and loam in piles that exceed the height of the adjoining residential buildings, as is shown in the two photographs that I've provided you with. It is not within that definition, that it will be offensive and injurious to the neighborhood by reason of that the presence of that large amount of materials in close proximity to the residences uh, spilling over onto their property in terms of their impacts. We also believe that the processing of these materials, even if it's limited to loading and unloading from ten-wheeled truck to trailers and dump trucks, moving it around with an excavator and a skid steer or two, moving it into and out of these bins, loading stone and gravel and concrete into and out of bins and trucks and all the other materials that Mr. Zender identified will create noise that permeates beyond the site and into and throughout the neighborhood. We've all heard the backup beeper noises that such industrial and commercial equipment is required to have. Backup beepers with that ear piercing sound that is designed to be louder than the equipment on which it operates and that is around it. That can't be contained on the site. It will affect the residential neighborhood to the west and beyond. Because of that, we believe that the standards of six point seven cannot be met by this use. The third step in my analysis, and I would suggest in yours in, in some order, is to actually go to section eight point four point two for whatever uses you decide require a special permit and ask if they meet the criteria. And the criteria, as you all know, is written in the negative. It says the board shall not grant a special permit unless you are convinced and are able to find that it meets what's proposed, meets all of the criteria for the granting of a special permit. And included within those granting, that those criteria are a number of questions you ought to ask yourselves or ask of the applicant, including whether the site is suitable for the proposed use, taking into consideration the already existing nearby uses of land. And the nearby uses of land include a restaurant to one side uh, and residences to the west and beyond. And we would suggest that this kind of activity is not compatible. It is not suitable to be, to be, uh, done in proximity to each other. This is not a good location for that kind of activity. I'm not arguing whether the town made good or bad decisions in deciding where to put its commercial use, commercial districts. Or whether this is or shouldn't be the only commercial site available for this kind of activity. The question of the special permit is not whether the good decision was made in designing the zoning plan, but whether this use is suitable for this site, given what already exists around it. And we suggested it's not. One of the other considerations for a special permit is whether the site design reasonably minimizes the visibility of parking and service areas within the site. And we suggested it does not. It's wide open. Everything in there is going to be completely visible from, from Route Six and from Old Wharf Road, which is incidentally a scenic road and a road to residential properties and residential district. The, the big question in the special permit is always whether the benefits of the proposal to the town exceed the potential adverse impacts to the neighborhood and surrounding vicinity. So what benefits would this give to the town? Mr. Zender cites the availability of jobs, job opportunities, providing needed services to residents and other businesses in the area. Those certainly are, are good opportunities for the owner of the business and owner of the property. But the employees already exist, they work out of the Dennis site. The business already provides the service in the Lower Cape, including in Welfley. Uh, so what, what really is added for the benefit of the town by having this site at this location? The benefit to the owner is clear. The benefit to town, in my opinion, is not. So what adverse effects do we balance against those benefits? I suggest, as, as the neighbors did in their letters and presentations to you last time, uh, noise, vibration are inevitable from this kind of a site. Uh, fumes and noise from the diesel engines of the equipment, moving these materials around, loading and unloading, uh, large, uh, containers and trucks and trailers uh, will be present and will be annoying to the neighborhood. The site clearly does not conform to what the bylaw envisions for preservation of the natural buffers along the roads. They demolished all the natural buffers. And they proposed to replace them with two and a half inch caliper oak trees spaced fifty feet apart, which in a few decades might touch at the crowns of their, of their limbs during the season. But it is not a reasonable replacement for what was already there and is not in keeping with what the bylaw envisions for the preservation of buffers along the roads and the preservation of those buffers through the retention of natural and existing vegetation. And if, as we suggest, these adverse effects are not just within the site, but affect the adjoining properties and the adjoining residential neighborhoods, then it doesn't qualify at all for industry light. It automatically becomes at best industry heavy, which is prohibited absent of variance from the site. So we do not believe that it qualifies for a, a special permit for either bulk storage or industry light. And would ask you to deny both. Step four in my analysis here looks at section five point two of your bylaw, which deals with all permitted uses and uses permitted by special permit. And it says that any permitted use or use permitted by special permit under section five point two and five point three of the use table, quote, "shall not be detrimental or offensive or tend to reduce property values in the same or adjoining district by reason of dust, dirt, glare, odor, fumes, smoke, gas, sewage, refuse, noise, vibration, danger of explosion of fire or traffic congestion." We suggest that many of those offensive categories will be present and will affect and adversely affect and offend the neighborhood. The residential neighbors most proximate on Wickson Avenue can't help but being adversely affected and objectionably uh, affected and their property values jeopardized by the presence of this kind of activity right next to their backyards. The last step that I would go through in, in analyzing what's permitted and what's permissible is to look at the district objectives. And ironically, Mr. Zender started with this same discussion. Now I'd like to follow up on it. Section 3.2 defines the commercial district and what it's intended to contain as follows, quote, "To provide for small and moderate scale business development for local and transient services, at the same time preserving and enhancing ocean views from the highway." And I'll concede we don't have any ocean views here. Or enhancing, excuse me, preserving and enhancing landscaping, minimizing visibility of parked autos, and avoiding the creation of hazards or congestion. Would you consider this a small or moderate scale business when it proposes to have mountains of sand and gravel taller than the height of the roofs of the adjoining residences? We don't. Would you consider it a small or moderate scale development to have at least 10 commercial vehicles principally stored and used at this site? Those vehicles are not just, as we discussed earlier, parked here and leaving the next day to go someplace else. They're also going to be used here. The engines are going to be running. They're going to be started up. They're going to be moving these materials around, both coming and going, and organizing into the bins and piles and containers. This is going to be a significant operation in terms of its impact upon these neighbors. Do you think that what they've proposed and described to you enhances the landscaping and the views from the roads adjoining it on either side? We do not. You have the pictures and you have your own knowledge. I'm sure you've all seen the site from both Route 6 and from Old Warf Road. This is not, in our opinion, going to enhance either the landscaping or the views and vistas from and around these roads and this neighborhood. And lastly, they certainly have not preserved the landscaping and buffers and minimized the visibility of the site by the clear cutting and the absolutely minimal proposed re-landscaping of the perimeters of this property. For all of these reasons, we do not believe that this is just a contractor's yard that's permitted of right. It is clearly far more than that and does not comply just with the definition of contractors yard. And in our opinion, the activities proposed will cross into the category of industrial activity and will, because of the impact on the neighborhood, not qualify for industry light and will be objectionable and offensive to the neighborhood and therefore require at a minimum the category of industry heavy, which is not allowed. So for all of those reasons, and for all the reasons I put forth in my letter to you, we believe that all of these applications should be denied. The uses do not qualify for what they've applied for and do not meet the criteria for any of your approvals based upon your assessment of what impact they will have upon this immediate neighborhood and vicinity. I thank you, madam, and ladies and gentlemen, for the opportunity to address you, and I hope you will consider all of these views as well as the opinions of your neighbors and constituents who have all written you letters and come out now on two nights for what I believe you described before the hearing actually started as perhaps the biggest attendance you've ever had in the zoning meeting. That has to tell you something. I thank you for your consideration and your time.
Ben's hand is up if you want to.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Very briefly, and I know you need to get to the letters, but just to address, not to provide counter, but just to address one question. And that's whether or not this is considered an industrial light use or industry heavy. The definition of industry light is fabrication, assembly, processing, finishing work, or packaging. That means that you're creating something or finishing something or packaging something there. Without the processing, without the screening of the loam, we're not proposing to alter or change the state of any material, only to bring it in, store it, and bring it out. And open bulk storage does require, and the definition is exposed outside storage of bulk materials. Of course, it requires some mechanical manipulation of the material. And to further that, the board has in its package, the the board has in its package, the email from the building inspector dated February 11, his response to my inquiry, and I'll read. He says, "Should the processing of loam or any other materials be part of the use operations, a special permit would also be required for such use as defined again in section 2.1 industry light." In fact, he specifically says that it is email. It's the processing of the topsoil and the loam that requires the industry light. So I don't think the building inspector has opined that the storage of the materials in bins or otherwise requires an industry light. And I don't think the board has been asked to vary his interpretation in that regard. And thank you for that.
Going to go to the letters, I believe, but I do have one hand up, so maybe I'll go to that. Chris, do we have other hands other than the one I have under the Mr. Williams whom I see?
There's a few.
Okay, I will let Mr. Williams speak, and then we'll go to the letters unless we see more hands. Mr. Williams? You're going to have to be unmuted.
You got to unmute him.
I'm unmuting.
Okay, I'm going to unmute Mr. Williams.
I keep hitting the button.
No, I can't do that.
There you go. All right, you're on, Dan.
Yeah, you're on.
Okay, good. Thank you so much. My name is Dan Williams. I'm a resident, primary resident on East Wind Circle. And I've been very involved in this and very, very concerned, as many, many other residents are. Now, I want to address a specific issue, if I may. So let me, I prefer to read this to you. I'll be as quick as possible. "The proposed bulk storage of tea-based finely crushed recycled asphalt, in my opinion, poses chemical and toxic threats to old wharf residents as well as restaurant owners." And as you know, we're inviting you to deny this special permit. As you know, asphalt is a mixture of petroleum compounds produced by oil refineries. There is a significant amount of literature about recycled asphalt and how that can be a source of cancer-causing toxic air pollutants such as arsenic, benzene, formaldehyde, and cadmium. "The EPA is clear on the dangers of storing recycled asphalt near residential communities." "The EP Office of Air Quality Planning and Standards, Fifth Edition Report, states, 'As asphalt is stored on site and then loaded into trucks and haul, toxic chemicals can be released into the air.' Some of these chemicals are in fine particles. Stagnant air and local weather patterns often increase the level of exposure to local communities. Exposure to these air toxics may cause cancer, central nervous system problems, liver damage, and respiratory problems,' end of quote." "As far as groundwater contamination, there is a major concern about how recycled asphalt is stored on site and whether the toxic chemicals in these solids can be leached into the groundwater by rainfall. As you might know, once wells and water supplies are contaminated, it is very difficult, if not impossible, to clean them up. As reported by the Boston Globe, the most recent water contamination problems and health issues have happened in the Upper Cape. However, it would be very wrong to assume that it could not happen in Wellfleet or the Outer Cape. Also, when you read, when you review the literature on the issue of asphalt polluting local communities, you see numerous discussions about the need to create a buffer zone between the asphalt bulk storage and the residential community. That buffer can be the distance of a football field or more, depending on the state or region. Obviously, that's not possible in this situation, which is another reason why this special permit should not be approved and frankly, why this type of industrial business is not appropriate on this commercial site. Finally, I would like to make a few brief comments about what Mr. Zender reportedly said in the Provincetown Independent, which I found."
I think that probably isn't part of the hearing.
Okay, so I'll pass that. So the bottom line, okay, I'll pass that. But I'm not, I'm not being hysterical. I don't think the people who've been speaking at the hearing are hysterical. I think what we're concerned about is public health. We're concerned about long-term viability of our community, of our wells, and our water supply and our financial future. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Brown. It's tricky to get you people unmuted, though, because it goes to more.
We're getting him.
Okay, good.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Wonderful. My name is Sean Brown. I live at 120 East Wind Circle. I am also a very, very concerned resident. One of the things that Attorney Zender mentioned in discussing and describing the commercial areas along Route 6 was that they were principally one, they sort of went one lot back. I think one of the important distinctions here is that there's been talk of the street that goes immediately behind this parcel. With traffic coming out onto Old Warf Road, that would actually be very different than many of the commercial areas that the attorney mentioned elsewhere in Wellfleet. So those areas don't have a road that comes out behind that goes into a residential area. Furthermore, the noise pollution of these machines running, maybe it's not 10 hours straight, but it will be very disruptive to the neighborhood. The visual pollution, which we've already very well established, knocking down all the trees, making it look like a wasteland. And finally, we talk about the benefit of commercial activity to the town. When the town voted in these commercial districts, it did so paying the benefits to the town and the benefits of having a commercial enterprise. As Attorney Reed pointed out very, very clearly, the negatives far, far outweigh the benefits to the neighborhood and to the town. And then finally, I would just want to again recognize what Mr. Williams just talked about. The environmental concerns around leaching of materials that are being brought in from other areas where we have no history of where those materials are coming from. There could be asbestos. There could be all kinds of materials that would be detrimental to the water table and to the residents in the area, especially the four residents who live along Wickson Road. Attorney Zender mentioned that they're seasonal residents. They're from April until November. Well, guess what? Most of the landscaping activities that I'm sure his client would like to do are also taking place during that time. So there's an added intensity for those residents when they only have half a year to enjoy their property. So again, I would just like to reiterate that I'm strongly opposed to the use of this space in the commercial manner that has been described. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, and I will go to Mr. Semasko. So Chris, if you could unmute him, because Lord knows it doesn't work for me. There you go.
Evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Great, thank you. My name is Thaddeus Semasko, and I've owned a residential property at 1118 State Highway for about 11 years now. My wife is also on the call. She's a zoning attorney, and we support completely Attorney Reed's letter. And we sent a letter to back up our support for that. My property is just across the road from 1065. It's the other side of Route 6, but we do exist, and we do have the same concerns as the group that's directly behind this property. I'm an architect with an office in Chatham, and I've spent countless hours in front of boards like yours advocating for good and thoughtful development for over 40 years now. I'm pro-development and I'm decidedly pro-business. I'm a huge advocate of land use rights. I'm not someone who buys land near an airport and then complains about airplane noise. In other words, I'm not a NIMBY by any stretch of the imagination. So last fall, I decided to make a significant investment in my property by way of a large addition for my family to enjoy. Making the decision, Ben, I did understand the zoning map. I was fully aware that the lot across the street wasn't a commercial zone. I looked through the table of uses and felt comfortable that any foreseeable development of the site would not affect my property values or the quiet use and enjoyment of my property. A restaurant, a retail outlet, an office, a bank, a pot shop, a garden center, a church, any of it would be just fine with me. I understood that Wellfleet had a very good ZBA, and through the special permit process would put thoughtful controls on the use and design of the property based on plenty of a butter input. The last thing I imagined was a regional excavation company with heavy equipment setting up a bulk storage operation and a heavy industrial use, as Wellfleet zoning clearly defines them. With winds off and off the bay heading in my direction, I'm sure I will hear it, that I will encounter the dust from it, and I will see the visual blight as I come and I go from the site. Coincidentally, my general contractor is also a regional player and used GFM on my project. GFM somehow managed to get their heavy equipment to Wellfleet and back to their industrial zoned lot in Dennis with no problem at all. In other words, they can serve the town of Wellfleet residents justified from their industrial zoned land in Dennis without being on 1065 State Highway. While they attempt to slither their way through parsing the zoning ordinance provisions, you just need to ask, does this project make any sense? It seems like about 100 neighbors who clearly would be negatively affected are saying it does not, and I agree. While I have multiple questions and comments on the site plan submitted, which I think is wholly inadequate, I don't even want to go there because I agree that this use should not, is just simply not allowed. However, if the ZBA decides to proceed with discussing the submitted plan, I respect for a request that I get an opportunity to address the ZBA again about it as a design professional. What we're seeing here is the advocate using the better ask-for-for forgiveness-than-commission playbook. It goes something like this. You do the work at 6:45 in the morning on a Saturday in the depths of January, when hardly anyone is around to notice and you can't get a cease and desist order. You strip mine the property, including encroaching 10 feet or so into the state's right-of-way where the tree line is. So you don't have to save any screening vegetation. You don't warn the neighbors, and you claim you didn't know you needed a permit. You fight the building commissioner's reasonable decisions tooth and nail. You hire a local, well-known zoning attorney to defend you, and you certainly don't show up at the hearings. You put the ZBA and the abutters in the upper position of protecting the neighborhood from someone trying to threaten the zoning needle as to why they can do whatever they do, even if it's bad. You minimize the scope of the operation, claiming that you'll have six or more construction vehicles and other unnamed equipment, but claim only two drivers will be operating it all. You make sure to be as blurry about the plant activities you can get away with. When the project scope is questioned, you throw a few bones at the abutters and the ZBA like saying, "I won't screen loam. I'll just have the massive sand piles and dirt piles and multiple heavy equipment on the site." You don't mention the myriad of other ways materials can be processed and stumps and so forth. You submit a totally inadequate and deficient unstamped site plan. You claim the legitimate concerns are just NIMBYism and objectives are not pro-business. You act like any commercial property, no matter how awful, should be allowed because there aren't many places in town to put such awful uses, just this one. You claim that you're creating jobs, but then say there's only two people coming to the site. You go so far to suggest to some of the butters with their children are occupying their homes illegally in a pandemic with a housing crisis. You expect the neighbors will eventually tire out, and you'll figure out that you'll get what you want in the end.
Mr. Semasko, you gotta not attack people. So can you just keep going and finish up?
I can tell you that the playbook has been largely discarded by thinking developers as ineffective, and it shouldn't be allowed here. Towns have put in reasonable procedures and controls that ensure land developers have property rights, but the rights of the adjacent landowners to the quiet use and enjoyment of their property, and therefore their property values are protected. I strongly urge the ZBA to break up this play before it goes any further and reject the special permit request outright for all of the legal reasons you have to do so, as so well expressed by Counselor Reed. Thank you so much for listening, and thank you all on the board for your service to our town.
Thank you, Mr. Semasko. Ben, I do see your hand, but I really would like to get to the letters before I go for any more back and forth. So I'm going to try to go to Mick. If you could go through and see which letters you have to read and.
Okay, I got a letter from Ruth Austensen. Is Ms. Austensen on the? Is she here? Wants to read the letter? Nope. Or you, nope. I don't see her. All right, I'll go ahead and read that one. Um, here we go. This was addressed to Christine Bates, who's the Secretary of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I am writing in opposition to the activities of Great White Realty at the corner of Old Wharf Road and Route Six. I live in the neighborhood and I'm very concerned with several issues. Old Wharf Road is the only exit onto Route Six for all the many residents living in this area, and this intersection is already dangerous and congested. Their presence will only increase that fact. I am also concerned about the noise and dust on the site and how that will affect our everyday lives and quiet enjoyment of living in this area in South Wellfleet. There is also potential negative impact on the environment. As you may know, Great White Realty has a credibility problem. I'm not going to go there. It's getting personal.
Yeah.
And so I'll go to the next, the next one is from Neil Schubin. Is Mr. Schubin on the call? We'll be on their end for Neil. No, don't see him, so I'll go ahead and read this one. Hello. While we welcome new small business activity in Wellfleet, the proposed development by Great White Realty at the corner of Route Six and Old Wharf Road poses numerous challenges and potential dangers for the community, including one, environmental disruption, two, negative impacts on local neighbors, particularly close to butters, and three, traffic safety. Given that these actors have, again, we're going into personal attacks here, so I'm going to skip that. And I'll go to the last one. It says, to elaborate, concerns include traffic congestion, noise, and dust on the site, possible nighttime work, light pollution, a decline in property values for those on Wixom Lane and nearby butters. Great White, Great White is presently transporting and processing large amounts. Again, this is not true. So here we go. I'll just go to the bottom. Uh, yeah, we're just going to skip this letter. Okay, Madam Chair? Thank you. Now, the next one I have would be, who has Casey? Casey be the next one up?
Casey?
Actually, I got Lisa Monahan, so I'll read this one, okay?
Read Lisa Monahan, yep.
Yep. To whom it may concern, we are writing to ask that the special permit being requested for the 1065 Route Six property owned by Great White be rejected. This site has been clear cut of beautiful trees, creating massive amounts of dust and with zero regard for the natural beauty of Wellfleet. Large trucks are proposed to come in and out of the site with inadequate access ways and civil engineering. Even though there are numerous families with young children, walkers and bikers regularly using Old Wharf Road, what is the benefit of permitting this use to the town? Perhaps a better question would be, what are the reparations that are going to be asked of this property owner to restore the site? And what are their plans for being a good neighbor? Thank you for consideration. Alrighty.
Alrighty.
And I think.
All right, Trevor, you, you have Casey, I think.
I got Cole, which is the next one in line, if you want me to bang that out.
All right, bang that one out, yeah.
Okay. It's a quick one. Dear Board Members, this is just a quick note to register my strong objection to this construction zone project at the intersection of Route Six and Old Wharf Road. I have lived here year-round for 16 years at 27 View Street off Western Avenue. Besides all the serious objections outlined in the letter from Attorney Reed, it also must be noted that Old Wharf Road is the only road that serves all the traffic to and from the many houses located there, many occupied year-round. And Route Six at the Old Wharf Road intersection is the only road that serves all the traffic to and from Province Town rural and the greater proportion of Wellfleet, choke point galore. It doesn't take much to cause an accident. Many have already occurred. During the tourist season, making a left turn anywhere near the intersection is often fraught with danger to life and limb. It is the cause of that exasperated decision to turn right to turn left. This move then results in turning left somewhere against traffic to turn about and then turn right again onto Route Six. I have witnessed or experienced this tactic over and over again, or worse, somebody make a sudden lurch left across traffic at any small opportunity, a harrowing experience. And now we have a busy construction business and dump wanting to join the freight. It's an insult to the neighborhood and is dangerous. Sincerely, Tom Cole. All right.
All right, I'll let somebody else take a turn.
I got my last one, if you want me to read it.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Do your last one then.
Thank you.
You got Scott, I got.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, there's only one, dear zoning board of appeals, we are writing to you with great concern regarding the business that is proposed to be established by the Great White Realty Group and GFM Enterprises at the corner of Old Wharf Road and Route Six. Traffic, large construction vehicles entering Route Six in this location will be major traffic hazard. This is already a dangerous section when entering onto Route Six from Old Wharf Road. There are over 200 homes, many year-round residents who only entrance to and from our homes is through Old Wharf Road and Route Six. We have watched numerous times how people fly through the traffic lights and the inside lane to pass a vehicle in the passing lane as the road turns into a two-lane for a short distance marked by Marconi. Right after the Marconi lights, the road once again turns into one lane, and cars either slam on the brakes or try to speed up the passing of the car. This is right at the location where the large construction vehicles will be starting their entrance onto Route Six. It is also the area where in the summer after the bottleneck traffic that starts at the drive-in theater usually starts easing up. If large construction vehicles now enter or are waiting to take a left-hand turn into the site, we will have a continuation of stop-and-go traffic for miles. It is not a question if it is dangerous. The question is how frequently accidents would happen there. As concerned residents having entered this section daily for the past 22 years, we certainly think any business with large construction vehicles and trailers should not be allowed. The town of Wellfleet should at a minimum require traffic study from the state before granting any permit for this. Noise, air, and aquifer pollution, all concerns, but the major heroes are aquifer and well water. The aquifer runs from the highway towards the homes in the area. Heavy equipment, noise, and fumes from diesel engines, sand, loam, storage, including soil brought in from who knows where. How will this affect the wells in the area and who will make enforcement on what is happening on the site once a permit is granted and the water starts showing pollution? Who will be responsible if we, after a few years, have issues with our well water? We already had an issue in this area in the 70s and early 80s when the gas station polluted the aquifer. Wixon, all the way into Eastwind Circle, had issues with water for decades. In the mid-90s, there were still problems getting potable water at some properties in Eastwood Circle. There are many reasons the business that GM Enterprises is looking to conduct in this location should not be allowed. What they are looking to do belongs on an industrial site, not at the entrance to a residential neighborhood with over 200 homes. This is also across the road from historic Marconi site and at the corner of Old Wharf Road, which happens to be dedicated as one of our 25 scenic roads in Wellfleet. In the long run, allowing this type of business the wide-open view for everyone to see if they enter and leave Wellfleet would be a huge mistake for the town. We hope you will take these issues under serious consideration before making any further decisions. Sincerely, Eva and Keith Scott. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, I have a hand who doesn't, Diane Hall doesn't seem to know how to, how to raise her hand from her computer, but she's waving at us, so. Chris, could you let her, let her be unmuted?
Who am I getting?
Diane Hall.
Diane Hall. She's waving at us.
Okay, I gotta find her.
Yeah, it's not easy. She'll be in the D's. I think these are an alphabetical order.
She'd be in under eight, yeah, D.
Yeah, there she is.
Where, where?
Under, uh, D, just between Dennis Carboni and Doug Franklin. And I would do it, but you know, every time I go near it, it says.
Wait, is this it? Wait. I'm sorry.
Let me see if I can do it. Fine, okay. Unmute Diane.
Here I am.
There you go. Hey, Diane.
Yes.
I am, I am, thank you. I'm sorry, I can't figure out how to raise my hand on Zoom meetings. Yes. Thank you for here. Thank you for noticing my hand waving. Um, my husband Peter and I own Van Rensselaers Restaurant on the property directly south of 1065 Route Six. Um, Peter spoke at the last ZBA meeting with our concerns about air and water quality as well as noise pollution. He gave several other concerns as well. Um, my concern tonight is what will be done with the old foundation that is on the property. Um, I'm not sure the site plan shows the future of the foundation. Not sure if it will be filled in. Um, will a building be erected on it? Will that part of the property be used? And what will it be used for? Um, I, I think this site kind of needs to be looked at as a whole. I feel like CFM is possibly going to lease maybe two-thirds of the property, which leaves that foundation kind of on its own. Wondering if, if GFM will, will be using that, that part of the property. Um, will somebody else open a business on that part of the property? If they were to use it, what parking needs would be needed for a second business? And would a second business share the same curb cut with GFM? Um, thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you. Thank you, Diane. All right, I'm, I'm gonna go back to the board and to letters, so we can work our way through these letters. Trevor.
Uh, yes.
One thing you could do is, rather than read them all, I think this might work, is to list the concerns that are raised in the letter. Does that make sense to people on the board, rather than reading every letter?
Yeah, I agree with that.
We have all read them, so if you could just sort of summarize what you're looking at in, in the letter. Um, and anything new that has not been stated on here, I know that you could read, but does that make sense?
Well, I'm not, I'm not prepared enough that I've summarized each letter ahead of time. Rather just.
Okay, just go for it.
Read it or, or not read it, it's the.
Go ahead and, go ahead and read them.
Uh, the first one I have is from Kathleen Casey. Um, I, I don't know if that individual is here and would like to read the letter themselves or not. Um, and I'm not sure how we would even find that out.
No, not here.
Not here?
No, go ahead and read.
Okay, so.
No, not here.
This says, Wellfleet zoning board members, I am a homeowner on Harvard Street off Old Wharf Road in South Wellfleet. I am writing to express my concern and opposition to the permitting request for a curb cut on the Old Wharf Road.
Okay, you can skip that part.
I can skip that because they're not asking for that anymore.
Right, 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 right.
Um, so. I'm just scanning it here. I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to small business development in Wellfleet. However, I don't expect that those businesses would be insensitive to their impacts on residents, residential neighborhoods, and the overall aesthetics of the environment. The activity that has been current, that has currently been allowed to occur at 1065 Route Six A, particularly the clear cutting of vegetation with no buffer residences demonstrates absolutely no regard towards the nearby homes and will likely lower their property values, certainly will devalue their enjoyment of the properties. Uh, I believe that compensatory remediation for the clear cutting on that property and the potential for additional disturbance from noise, traffic, and dust needs to be addressed. Um, and then she goes back to the driveway curb cut, so.
Okay. All right, okay.
And then the next one I'm supposed to read is Gibbons. Is Gibbons here? Let's see. Gibbons is Joanne Gibbons.
Nope. No, no.
Okay. Not seeing her.
Uh, to the Wellfleet zoning, to the zoning board of appeals, this note is to register my oppositions to the application of Great White Realty for its use of the property at 1065 State Highway Route Six in South Wellfleet as a contractor's yard. As a resident of Eastwind Circle, I have very serious concerns about what such an enterprise at this location would do on many levels, including environmental damage and pollution, air pollution, noise pollution, traffic, and aesthetics. Environmentally, I have extremely serious concerns about the very large construction vehicles that would be parked there and the potential of hazards like oil, gasoline, and other contaminants leaking into the ground and polluting the groundwater. We are all on wells here in South Wellfleet, and past history has shown that such contaminants leak into the ground and pollute the drinking water. This happened years ago when the gas station formerly at what is now the restaurant catch of the day had tanks that leaked and polluted the well on my property and the wells of our neighbors. This is a serious issue. This should not be allowed. I am also concerned that such environmental damage could also affect Blackfish Creek and the fish and wildlife that live there. Air pollution will be a potential issue with the large trucks and diesel fuel, as well as coming and going of the trucks and other vehicles throughout the day. Additionally, the dust that will be raised from the open piles of sand, loam, concrete, et cetera, will not be healthy to breathe and will create dirt and dust on our properties and in our homes. Noise pollution is another serious issue with loud construction vehicles and vibrations that would send, they would send out the moving about of metal pipes clanking and dropping and the thudding movement of building materials about the site. This will interfere with the quiet enjoyment of our homes. Traffic will be substantially affected. The intersection of Old Wharf Road and Route Six is bad enough as it is. You can't take a left onto Route Six after Memorial Day with nothing on that lot. Now it is proposed to have a construct, to have construction vehicles coming in and out all day. It will be a serious accident waiting to happen. Automobile versus large construction vehicle. The automobile and passengers will not win. Also, people walk and bicycle up by there. Pedestrians and bicyclists won't stand a chance. Can we really take that chance? Aesthetically, this company has already ruined the property. It is an ugly eyesore. I can't imagine it is going to get any better. They're proposing three-foot bushes? Question, seriously? Um, I'm just reading this verbatim. Uh, how tall is a construction vehicle? They have more than, they are more than three feet tall for sure. Also, this eyesore stands at the entrance to one of the most beautiful national parks in the country, Marconi Beach. It is a disgrace that this would be allowed right across the street from it. South Wellfleet is a gateway into Wellfleet. Our town must take pride in its appearance to our guests and tourists. Finally, this lot is zoned for commercial uses. I would like to challenge that a contractor's yard should be considered a strict, strictly commercial enterprise. A contractor's yard should really be considered like industrial. This area is not suited for industry. No one wants it into industrial park there. This lot is better suited for a small retail shop, office space, et cetera. Thank you for your time and consideration. And that sign, Joanne Gibbons of 70 East Wind Circle. Should I keep going, Sharon?
Keep going.
Uh, the next one I have is Williams.
That was Dan, right?
Dan Williams, which I believe he spoke correctly.
He spoke, yes, okay, so you.
So can I, can I skip that?
That one, yes. We've heard from Mr. Williams.
Next one I have is Burnell, which I believe is Mark Burnell and Becky Cotton. I don't know if they are here.
I don't see Mark Burnell.
No, I don't either. I'll look.
Becky, I do not see. Nope. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, this is a rather lengthy letter.
Um, so if you, if you, if you start to find that you're saying the, the same issues, you can.
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll start to read it and we'll, we'll see where it goes.
Yeah.
Um, the message says, we, Mark Burnell and Elizabeth Becky Cotton are homeowners at 56 Beach Street. Uh, our only access to Route Six is via an intersection at Old Wharf Road in South Wellfleet. We are writing to express with many of our fellow neighbors, residents, and taxpayers our strong opposition to the permitting request by Great White Realty for, for an Old Wharf Road for the Route 1065 Six A property. That doesn't make any sense. Uh, issue one, this proposed project in its application for a curb cut is a brazen attempt to circumvent, to circumvent the property juris.
You don't need to deal with the.
Right, I can skip that.
Yep.
The property has already been clear cut without permitting and regard to the environmental damage to the area and without notice to adjacent property owners. The property is now a scar in the community, diminishing the value of adjacent properties. It will take years to reestablish, reestablish landscaping so as to restore the area and shield adjacent properties from this unsightly condition. The actions already taken violate numerous provisions of the zoning bylaws. Section 3.2B.
I, I don't think you need to read those since Attorney Reed took us through those.
Yeah, I thought so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you can skip those.
All right, I will, uh, okay. The next thing that they talk about is, they refer to as issue two. Route Six is the address of this property, and it should be the primary and only access to this commercial property. The problems created by this use on Route Six need to be addressed on Route Six, not shifted to others to bear. Furthermore, any access to the site should be thoroughly vetted so as to protect the health and welfare of our residents and visitors to Wellfleet. Undoubtedly, the proposed cut, right?
Yeah.
Um, she says, undoubtedly, the proposed business will generate additional traffic and traffic conflicts along Route Six. That fact alone confirms that the proposed curb cut application simply shifts the additional traffic burdens. Okay, so that's talking about shifting that to Old Wharf Road, which is not applicable.
As I skim through the rest of this letter, it does seem like it's largely concerned with the curb cut issue.
Correct.
And I don't think you need to read that. And I don't think you need to read that because we're not even, that's not even before us. We're not going to let that happen.
I, I will not argue with you on that.
Okay.
And the next one is Dugan, which I have actually not found in this list yet. So maybe you can go to someone else and I'll see if I can find the Dugan letter.
Okay, Andy. Wherever he is. Andy, you're on.
He's muted.
Yeah, he's muted. Let's see if that works.
Hi.
Hi, okay.
There you go.
I don't think I have quite as many as everybody else, and I think there are some of the people whose letters or emails I have, I see are here. What does that mean?
What you do is ask the person if they would like to read their own letter.
I have an email from Dwight Esty and one from Arlene Esty. Arlene's and Dwight's both had a deal with, in part, the curb cut.
Okay.
We don't need to talk about that.
Nope.
You know, Arlene's is, I can, she says, "Dust, noise, and bright lighting from the proposed activities are concerning in regards to free nearby restaurants where patrons enjoy outdoor dining. And traffic is an issue. The Marconi Light Intersection is very busy and some of the trucks and heavy equipment will exacerbate it. I urge you to carefully consider the impact of this enterprise on the entire town." So Dwight is here also. He says curb cut. Then, he also says issue two, insufficient buffering in the plan. The white oak spaced 20 feet apart will not form a complete buffer for decades. Additionally, they'll lose their leaves for many months, thus providing no visual blocking from the large equipment that will be stored. When a prior plan was approved for the site, an order of condition was creation of a buffer composed of both white oak and leland spruces, he said. It's of note that the current level of clearing, which was done without permitting, was way beyond the scope of what was approved for the previous applicant. At that time, clearing had only been approved for the foundation and specified parking. And three proposed use not in keeping with the surroundings. And then he's talking about screening again of materials. He also says windy days blowing material will impede visibility on the highway and coat cars parked at BR's Restaurant. This operation would significantly reduce the value of the restaurants and businesses of the area. And I'm concerned with the dropping property values of homes along Wickham Avenue and the top of Old Wharf Road. And for lack of specificity of, on storage of equipment and materials, the plan did not specifically state the size of the parking areas, instead providing generic squares that do not appear realistic for the amount of equipment listed. What are the limits of parking and how will they be enforced? So that's. And I have another email from Randall Wilkening. I see he's on, or what's his name, Wilkening is, was.
We have Randall and Greta, I believe.
Okay. So what do I do then?
Ask if they would like to read their own letter.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. shouldn't say.
One doesn't know.
Would you like to read your email?
Would you like to read your email, if so?
Yes, this one is from Randall Wilkening. Randall, would you like to read your email?
I don't think he's here.
I thought I saw Wilkening, okay.
Oh yeah, he's here.
Here he is. Mr. Wilkening, would you like to read your email, or would you like us to?
Better one muted.
Read it for you.
He's muted.
I know, I've asked it, but you know, I have to ask to unmute, yes, Mr. Wilkening.
No, I don't actually need to reread it. I think the only issue, I mean, all the issues have been, many of the issues have been, been addressed. The one thing I think I mentioned in that email that hasn't been discussed is regarding, again, the, the use of Old Wharf Road. It is a site where the school buses pick up and, and drop off kids. So during nine months of the year, when school's in session, there's an increased risk of young people who are then being exposed specifically to all, all the issues that have been raised. So I just put that perspective on in everybody's mind as well. Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Andy, I think that counts for the Wilkening's there. Okay.
I don't know if she's.
And she's, she's still at work, so she's not here to participate.
Participate, okay. Would she like us to read her?
Sure, I'm sure that she would, yeah.
All right, so read, read that one then.
"I am writing to express," first of all, the, the Wilkening's live at 125 Atlantic Avenue. "I'm writing to express my objections to the manner in which great white realty has managed their intentions regarding their pro-
Okay, let's, let's skip that first paragraph because we're trained to not cast dispersions, so.
"A great many of us access our homes by Old Wharf from Route 6. This is a difficult traffic spot and the presence of many large vehicles and piles of dirt, loam, and sand walking good sightlines will make it more so. Great many of us ride bicycles or walk on Old Wharf, crossing over to the bicycle path. Again, the presence of large vehicles, mounds of soil and sand will make this less safe. Finally, school buses, this is what Randall just mentioned. If the homes in the neighborhood have wells from which we get our drinking water, I'm concerned about the impact of fuel, oil, chemicals, and fertilizers on the quality of our drinking water. In addition, the impact on the wetlands of those toxic substances should be of concern to all of us, not just those of us who live off of Old Wharf. The potential impact on aquaculture, a key element of the identify, I think probably she meant identity and financial. One plate, if it's inhabited, is at risk if great white realty is allowed to store potentially lethal and toxic substances in a location where they can impact the tidal basin."
The last part is, is about great white. We'll skip that.
The last one?
Yes, skip that.
Okay. Now I have a, an email from Susan and Robert Schechter. I don't know whether they're here. I, I scrolled through, but I don't think I saw them. They live. Tell us where they live. Just didn't see it. But they say they have, they've had a home for 23 years. They oppose the granting of any permits to allow great white realty to operate a business which really belongs in an industrial park. There are many aspects of business that challenge the safety and health of the hundreds of individuals who live in the neighborhood. There are also many quality of life issues. It's astounding that Wellfleet and Cape Cod in general, with so many conservation and environmental protection initiatives, would allow use of this nature so close to a large residential neighborhood where hundreds, hundreds of people access their homes via Old Wharf Road exclusively. And it's also very close to several restaurants and the Marconi entrance to the National Seashore. These are some of our concerns. One. All this is traffic. What's that?
You can probably just summarize them because I think.
They're talking about traffic. Second, potential pollution to the drinking water and air. Three, three, the potential for continual noise at all hours. Last paragraph.
Yeah, skip the last paragraph.
Okay, and the next one I have is from Marta Hansen. I don't, I don't know whether she is here. Also, it says Marta Hansen and Christina Johnson. And it says, "They're full-time residents of East Wind Circle. They're writing to express great concerns about the use of this property. The complete disregard of our community by the immediate and destructive clear cutting of the land must be addressed appropriately fine and requirement to replace with mature, healthy plants slash trees that buffer, buffers the property wall sides, regardless of what they use the property for." And this curb cut, so I'll skip that. "We believe that the intentions is to have big equipment slash vehicles on the property entering and exiting on. It's also poses a high risk, particularly in the summer. Old Wharf is the only access. Great concern by the large mounds higher than the allowed height of a house of dirt and loam. Risk of pollution, dust particles blown into the neighborhood is a significant environmental and health concern, as well as noise pollution. Industrial yard will be highly disturbing to the neighborhoods." Let's see. Now, I think the rest is. And then I have one from Laura Kozak. Yeah. Laura. Yeah, I don't know if she's here. She's a full-time resident of 50 Wickham Avenue, which runs off of Old Wharf. "I have so many concerns about the use of this property by Steve and Donna Giovanni, as well as GFM excavating. I don't feel it's a zone for contractor's yard with the size of their equipment trucks and scope and all that will be housed on the property and work performed there outside. I see piles of sand from inside my home, as well as from my front yard when I go out to get the paper." I'm gonna skip the next paragraph. Let's see. Yeah, well, "I have spoken to Sean, who owns Capeview Motel and Furo near GFM," and she states, "must be shit, the, the noise is constant from their work, machines they have, which make loam and topsoil." Okay, that doesn't apply, so they're not gonna do that. Sunflowers is mentioned as one.
No, let's not get into that one.
Okay.
No, we don't need to get into that one.
I, I heard, yeah.
Not, not, not part of our concern.
She mentions the clear cutting right after the property was purchased and continued through the weekend. No permit was issued. Clearly doing this type of work on a weekend was pulling a, a fast one. Okay, "What will traffic like be in this area? Extremely difficult to take a left-hand turn onto Route 6 from Old Wharf. Residents now take a right-hand turn and go into the old fire station or go to the light Marconi." Then they're talking about curb cuts. "What will it be like with the size and slow speed of this equipment? Traffic in the summer can back up in this area all the way to the theater and into Eastham. What about residential property? For those of us near the site, what will happen to our property values? Also, when trying to sell with a Realtor and prospective buyers on premises, how many people will be interested in the noise coming from there? Seeing the size of their equipment and what they want to store on this site." I'm kind of paraphrasing here.
Sure.
Noise and dust. Sean from Capeview Motel. And then she talks about the quality of the air. What will be like? Picketing yard activities, dust covering cars, homes and windows, outside laundry, and my neighbor's backyard pool. Will we ever have the privilege again of opening our windows? Then she talks about screening and stripping of loam. Then says topsoil, sand, tea base, stone, and gravel does not belong in this site. And then she says, "I feel that I should mention Rensselaer's in the South Fleet Motel," or in rather. Both have been family-run businesses for decades. Now sitting in BR's dining room and bar, looking at the piles of machinery. Of a sentence, but. Window will need constant cleaning. I see cars in the parking lot will be covered in dust. The South Fleet, where people stay on vacation. What will happen when guests are awakened by the sound of their trucks when they hope to sleep late? An outside pool area and lounge chairs that will need constant cleaning from the dust. Okay, so that's that. Last one I have. Another one from Laura Kozak. She says, "I forgot to mention lighting." So she's talking about lighting shining into her homes. Constantly VR's has limited lighting, South Fleet the same. I don't know, I haven't heard anything about lighting, Madam Chair, so I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, it's just something to add to the list of things we would like to ask about.
Concerned about lighting, and that's all I have.
Okay, all right. All right, I have Mr. Iacusi, who I think we have a letter from. We have his hand up, so perhaps you'd like to speak to your letter, and then we won't have to read it. Jan, I think you have that letter, so you can call on him and then.
He's muted.
To the rest of your letters.
Yeah, Jan, I believe, is muted.
Now Jan is muted.
Mr. Iacusa is muted.
Yeah. Yeah, well, first we gotta unmute Jan, so that she can.
Okay.
All right, well, Mr. Iacusa, and we'll work on Jan in a minute.
Yes, I'm not reading my letter. I just want to make a point that I think has been a little, a little different than, than others. And, and talk about Wickham Road. Wickham Road is a very nice road to, to go down. I, I bike it a number of times. The homes are modest. They're, they're low, lower value than most homes in, in Wellfleet by far. And it's, it's a place where if things come on sale, local residents could afford to buy those. And the properties are well-kept. And so I'm not talking about just the butters, but I'm talking about the properties on the other side of Wickham Road. And again, that, that's a priority in this town is to have the residents be able to, be able to buy property here when it comes available. And to lower the value of that and the desirability. People of any income level or affordability have as much right to peace and quiet and a decent environment. And that's the only point I would like to make.
Back to you for the rest of your letters, then. If I can get her unmuted.
To me?
Yeah, it's to you.
Oh, okay, all right. So my first letter is from Samuel Engel. Is Samuel Engel here and would he like to read his letter?
Not here.
Okay.
Okay, the first part deals with the curb cut on Old Wharf Road, so we don't need to deal with that. Safety, he's concerned about heavy traffic on Route 6 and Old Wharf Road. Making turns off the highway even more dangerous than it is today and making it difficult to see and navigate traffic. Environment, dust and pollutants blowing into neighboring houses and the restaurants. Children waiting at the bus stop to be forced to breathe diesel fuel from idling trucks. Enjoyment, the children and older residents who regularly walk Old Wharf Road will be threatened by heavy traffic and noise. Sightlines approaching and departing Old Wharf, Old Wharf Road have been ruined.
Yep.
Their dead of night clear cutting and will scarcely be restored by planning a new road, road of ceilings. And asks that we reject their application.
Okay.
The next one is from Amy Wolf and Kevin Coakley. Are they here?
Let's see.
Yeah, I thought I saw Kevin Coakley.
Kevin is here.
Kevin, do you want to read your letter?
He's probably muted.
Probably muted.
Yeah.
Muted and his video is off too.
Yep. Well, go ahead, just go ahead and read it then, Jan.
Okay, it, it starts, okay, it, it starts out that they're writing. Hello?
About the cease and desist and stuff, yeah, you can.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see, "The closing of the property was on January 8th, 2021. The property was cleared on the weekend of January 9th and 10th, 2021. While the clear cutting of the property did not violate any bylaws, it was a blatant assault on property community and the entire town. Our property is no longer protected from the traffic noises of Route 6. The trees used to absorb the sound, but they no longer exist. They're profoundly concerned with regards to the potential environment impact on the neighborhood. Risk to their well water being contaminated, quality of life with noise, lights, idling motors, large equipment. They can only imagine what the noise will be like in the neighborhood. Screaming, screening of loam and topsoil, but that's not gonna be done anymore. They're concerned about their property values. While we are aware of the need of small business development in town, this enterprise seems more apt to be placed in an industrial area rather than a budding residential neighborhood." There's something about there's no access to the property, but I, that's, I, I don't think that's the case. In conclusion, we're incredibly concerned with regards to the plans for this, in quotes, contractors' yards and encourage you to deny the appeal. Uh, I next have the two, um, emails from Mister Iacusa, but he already spoke, so I'm assuming we're done with those.
Yep, we're done with those.
I have an email from Alice Iacusa. Is she here and would she like to read her email?
Nope, she's working.
Okay. My husband and I, it's pretty short, I'll just read it. My husband and I have owned our home at two oh six Old Worth, Old Wharf Road since nineteen seventy-five. And I'm writing to strongly oppose the activity of great, great white realty. I can't talk tonight, can I?
Nobody can by now.
With Old Wharf Road and Route six. I'm dismayed that a company can proceed in the way this one has. A number of homes will be impacted by this business. Noise, dust, lights will negatively affect homes on Wixom Road and along the start of Old Wharf Road. VR's restaurant will face problems as well as noise on their patio and dust blowing onto parked cars. Uh, there will be a traffic issue, especially in the summer with large commercial vehicles exiting onto Route six. And people driving along Roots, Route six and entering and exiting Marconi Road. This is already a busy stretch of highway. I realize that Route six is zone for business, but I wonder if the activity of great white realty is not commercial but industrial. There are too many people impacted by the kind of business this company wants to operate on this land. I urge you to deny their request. Um, okay. Next one is from Arthur Zelman. Is Mister Zelman here?
Nope.
Okay.
Let's see. So, uh, they are very concerned about what's going on there. Uh, we have many reasons for opposing it. The three foremost are the following, and it's very short. First, the site is located in an already dangerous intersection. Second, the intersection represents the only entrance to an entirely residential neighborhood. And the pros, proposed plan would change its entire aesthetic. Then it's about great white disregarding, uh, town's regulations and they hope that we will reject the application. Okay, last is Denise and Eric Candell. I thought I saw them here at one point.
Denise Candell, yep, she's here.
If you'd like to read your letter, uh, that would be fine with me.
Gotta unmute her.
Chris, can you unmute Denise Candell?
No, I cannot read my letter. I don't even have it.
Oh, okay.
I think most of the point that I've made have been made by other people, so you can say fine.
Alright, fine, okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you very much, Miss Candell.
Then I'm done.
Okay, alright, Trevor, did you find the other one you wanted? Okay, did you wanna go ahead and do that one?
Um, yeah, the other one was from Janet and Bill Dugan. They list five points. Um, the first point is regarding the credibility of the owners, which I will skip. The second point is regarding traffic. They talk about traffic sa- uh, they, he says, traffic safety at the intersection of Old Wharf Road and Route six is already a problem that would be exacerbated by new industrial traffic to and from the site. There've already been several serious accidents of this intersection which involved left turns. Traffic study is needed to determine if a traffic light is needed and to address the new safety issues that would be created by this business. The third point is impact on the neighborhood. This industrial business will create noise, dust and contamination problems for its neighbors. These issues will inevitably reduce property values in the neighborhood. Uh, the fourth point is impact on the environment. This industry conducts the transport, sifting and processing of materials such as gravel, sand and topsoil. These materials may contain herbicides, fertilizers and other toxic chemicals. These activities and chemicals present a danger to our community. The occurrence of these hazards and including cancer on Cape Cod has been reported in the Boston Globe. Uh, and then they, uh, make a point of actions that should be taken. And they talk about instituting fines on the property, but I don't think that's really germane to what we do. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, alright, and the ones that I have, can you people hear me? I'm just gonna acknowledge that the people who have written, I think that most of what they have said, um, although Mister Petroselli, you have your hand up and I have your letter first, so if you would like to speak to your letter, that's okay. That's Jeff Petroselli. Chris, if you wanna unmute him. See, he had his hand up. Wherever he is. There he is, Jeff Petroselli.
I found him, I'm, my bu- my, it's not unmuting.
I know, I, I have that same problem. You go up and you go to the thing and it says ask to unmute and.
Yeah.
Get to the person. It's very weird.
Well, we can always read the letter out.
I'll, I'll read the letter then. This is from, uh, Patricia Cantor, Petroselli and, and Jeff Petroselli. I'm sorry, Mister Petroselli, we can't figure out how to unmute you. I can ask you to unmute, but I can't unmute you.
I can either.
Okay, um, we are writing regarding the above referenced materials. Um, this was the, uh, I'm urging you to deny the appeals. Well, we did that. Um, we have owned a home in Old Wharf Road for thirty-five years. We were shocked and appalled to see the clear cutting. We fully support the position set forth in Attorney Reed's letter, and then he goes into the specific ones, um, from Attorney Reed. Additionally, the owner's proposal to plant trees and other vegetation along the property's boundaries are inadequate. We request the board, if, if the board is inclined to grant its special permit, it require comprehensive screening and restoration plan, including revegetation. Finally, to remedy the clear cutting and creation of the sand and dirt mountains, all done without required permits and in violation of the town's zoning bylaws. We request the building inspector to take enforcement action regarding the owner to forthwith replicate the pre-existing vegetation. That's that one. I have one from, uh, Deborah O'Neill. It's in the, the activity of great white is inac- inappropriate and too intensive for this residential ne- neighborhood. She mentions traffic congestions and traffic safety, the impact on the environment, um, and the need to restore the property. Herb and Elizabeth Elliott. They will adversely affect the residential area. Property values will plummet. Undo traffic jams with trucks entering and leaving. Adversely affect Van Rensselaer's restaurant, uh, great threat to air and water pollution, excessive noise from the large trucks, large risk of water pollution. Um, and then something about the current owner. From Craig, Stephen Craig and Naimi Shea, uh, strong opposition. It will have a detrimental effect upon the tranquility, property values and overall character. Our concern are include traffic and safety, increased noise, insufficient buffer zones and potential environmental ha- hazards. One from Anne Spar, writing to regarding this. Storage of these materials will cause noise, dust, light, nightlight pollution, and there's a possibility the water will be impacted. As a homeowner, I'm mindful that a loud dusty truck filled business creating a potential environmental ni- nightmare will impact home values and longstanding businesses. From Deborah Dickinson. About the, also ra- references the large and heavy trucks and the traffic. And my favorite and final letter is, my name is Emeline Dickinson. I am a Western Avenue resident and very much opposed to the expected changes due to occur at the intersection of Old Wharf Road. At Route six, as a new and extremely cautious driver who has lived in this location my entire seventeen years. I am not anxious to repeat the multitude of accidents, including several fatalities that have occurred in this spot, and I firmly believe the proposed changes will lead to more of both. In light of tomorrow's meeting, I want the voice of a young adult heard among the many others as one who wholeheartedly stands entirely against these plans. That's what I've got. Alright. I think it's time to go to the board for some questions. So I'm gonna start with you, Mick.
At this stage, I have no questions, but as can be guessed, I do have a comment, so.
Okay, so we'll go around with questions.
Rules to my other, compared to my other members.
Okay, Trevor.
Uh, I don't think I have any questions for the applicant at the moment.
Okay, Al. Yep, the unmute. Unmute Al, Chris, so we can talk. While you, while we're doing that, I'll go to Andy and let Andy, oh, I mean, Andy's muted too. I'll go to Jan. Jan's not muted.
Uh, I kinda hate to have you do that because I have quite a few questions.
I, I know.
I can, I can start and then you can go to somebody else when they get unmute. Oh, Al's unmuted.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
There's no questions, okay, Andy, do you have any questions? Andy is muted. Chris, Andy is muted. I wish I could do this, but I can't.
Will Sullivan is here.
Hey, Will Sullivan is not, um, not on this board though, tonight.
Ah, okay.
He asked not to be. Alright, Andy, no?
There he goes.
Alright, there you go.
There you go.
Yeah, there we go. Uh, I don't know, I mean, I, I've got a, a fair number of questions, uh. Well, why don't I go first? I know Jan very well and Jan probably has pages of questions.
Right.
Okay. These are to Ben.
Okay, Ben, so you should be unmuted, so you can answer them. No, he isn't yet. Chris, you need to unmute Ben. Okay.
I'm live, Andy.
Okay, good. Um, okay, uh, no particular order. Is there a maximum number of cubic yards of any of these materials?
I, you know, do, do you mind if I just line these up and, and maybe I can just get Greg to answer them on it? Either way, I can do it one at a time if you want, whatever works best for the board.
No, I get, uh, we can do that.
The answer is yes, we could certainly agree to a maximum, not only a maximum cubic yard for any particular material, we can also agree to height limitations for the piles.
Alright, well, let's go on with my questions.
Okay, I'm just gonna take some notes if you don't mind.
You're in a problem. So the next question I had basically has to do with the size of, of the areas. I contrary to what you have stated, I don't mean that you're misstating, it's hard to tell Ben, uh, from this. I mean, I try to use the scale, is one inch is twenty feet, is that what it was?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But still, I, I, I it's hard for me to imagine that this equipment is going to be limited in the particular areas that you've designated. And I, so I mean, are these absolutes or, or is this something that's sort of around? Maybe about here?
Well, to answer the question, look, I think the plan is very specific in terms of the dimensions of the storage container area. It's very specific in terms of the proposed parking area for the trailers and trucks. And it's very specific in the area for the excavator. Now, we can certainly dimension those areas if the board wants, and I expect that you may want a more specific plan presented. The proposed storage area for supplies. They put, uh, there's a linear length that can be calculated by that, but we can certainly either diminish that area. Um, we could, it outlined dimensions of, of concrete block bins for the board if they want. So like, we're, we're, we're more than happy to tighten that down. I think the applicant has looked at this site, looked at where the vegetation is required to screen this under the byline, has identified the, the areas that work for them from a maneuverability standpoint. The other thing we could certainly do, and I think was implicit in your question, Andy, was what is the square footage of the area that's in use? And we can certainly provide a calculation on that as well.
Well, it's not just that, it's, it's beyond that. It's okay, I mean, I could probably take a ruler and figure out what, uh, for example, the proposed parking areas for the trailers and trucks is, but, uh, I mean, I've seen other contractors' yards and I don't think trailers and trucks necessarily are restricted into a specific area like that and, uh, I, I'm, I'm just wondering if you're representing that, yes, they will be specifically in those areas and no other place.
Well, the, the answer is no, I'm not representing that, but I'm representing that the applicant has informed me that these are the areas within which they're gonna conduct these activities. I can tell you from permitting other contractors' yards and material handling yards that it's, it's certainly easy to locate stored, material storage areas for bins, for example, and to pin those down on a site point. Um, and I think to the extent that this is a special permit for bulk, bulk over storage, we need to do that to the satisfaction of the board. You know, to the extent that, for example, you know, GFM's gonna bring in risers and pipes and maybe even manipulate those in some way. You know, because, uh, you know, the country just says that it also, it, it also includes assembly of sub-assemblies. We can restrict it, we can identify it as much as the board wants, understanding that a contractor's yard is where vehicles maneuver and move and turn and, and come and go. So I don't wanna represent, for example, that there's gonna be an area in the middle of the yard where a truck won't drive over or something like that, but I, we'll make this, you know, we'll identify as specifically as the board wants exactly where these activities are going to take place.
Okay, and, uh, my next question has to do with basically, uh, your response to Attorney Reed's, uh, comment about, uh, the movement of materials within the lot.
And, okay, what I would say is this, look, and I, 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 I addressed earlier, I think in response, industry, light and heavy has to do with the manufacture or processing of materials to create a product that's then taken off-site. It could be a factory, it could be, um, it could be, for example, a, a, a material crushing yard, a screening yard, a processing yard, and anytime you're taking a material and actively working with it to change its form in some way. And that creates the byproducts of light, heat, noise, dust, et cetera. I think bulk storage open in your, in your bylaw that defines as a permitted use by special permit in this area talk, talks about the exposed outside storage of bulk materials, including landscaping supplies and coal and sand and things. I, I think that if they're bringing materials in, in a certain form and removing them from the site in that same form without actually manipulating them in some way, other than getting it out of the truck or into the truck. I don't think there's a processing component to this as contemplated by the bylaw. I, I, or put a different way, I don't think you can have bulk storage and bulk handling without some machinery to handle that, to handle the bulk materials. So does that, does that, was that the question you were asking, Andy?
You told me what your opinion is, what, what are you based on? What do you base?
I based on, I based on a reading of the bylaw. You know, when you read the bylaw, it, it, it has a separate use in and apart from light industry and heavy industry, and that uses bulk storage open. So, I, you know, I, I don't think any of us would disagree that a pile of sand in a bin would be bulk storage of, of a material. Um, I think the question becomes, what's part and parcel of that use? I don't think you can say it's usable without having some way of manipulating it.
One of the questions is, what does the word processing mean?
I, I, I think, and look, processing is not defined in the bylaw.
What does it mean?
To me, processing means manipulating it in some way as to change its form, because what, so, for example, if you were to bring in topsoil or, 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 or raw sand and you were to run it through a screening process to extract the gravel and, and et cetera, and grade the gravel or grade the sand, I think that would be processing of a material. And I think that's, that's clearly what the building inspector meant in his email when he said, if you're going to engage in processing of, of, of topsoil, that would be a light industry permit. So I think processing involves not just movement of material. You know, you know, the bylaw says packaging, assembly, fabrication, process. I think all of those implicate some type of handling of material other than just moving it from one place to another. Uh, another example would be, you know, in the bill is a transport terminal. You know, that says that you're going to move trucks and materials to a transport terminal for then further movement to another location. If they built a building that was gonna handle wholesale materials, palletized materials, boxes of things, and they were gonna bring them in and move them to another site. That would clearly be a transport terminal, but I don't think the movement of those boxes in and out of the trucks would itself, itself be processed.
Okay, uh, let's move on. Cause I know Jan's waiting.
Can we maybe get Mister Reed's, uh, um, reaction to that?
Uh, I don't, I don't know. Uh, I don't, I don't know, uh, Madam Chair, I think it's our turn now and.
It's our turn. We can, we can certainly, let's get through your questions and, and then we'll get a, yeah, we can go back if we, if we want. We're still in open hearing. We can still ask anyone we want a question, but right now, why don't you get through yours?
Ben?
I'm listening, Andy.
Wouldn't it be a, a fair amount of dust, uh, that's gonna be created by the dumping of this stuff and the movement of this stuff, even, you know, within?
Well, let's, uh, let, let, let me, let me paint a scenario. Let, let's say, a truck comes into the site, and let's say the, the loader and, and the proposal here is to have one loader on site, that's it. Only one piece of equipment handling these materials. Let's say that loader goes to the bin, picks up a, a bucket full of sand, and, and turns 90 degrees and dumps it into the bottom of a truck and does that, let's say it does it as many times as necessary to fill the truck. I, I can tell you, I was at the, I was at Cape Sand and Gravel this weekend getting mulch from my house, and I watched them loading trucks. Yeah, there's, there's a certain amount of dust, but it, it just, it just settles right down as soon as the activity is over, so.
Depends on what the weather's like, uh, you know.
Well.
And we get a fair amount of wind, so.
Well, understood, but, but this is not, for example, you know, a concrete crushing operation where you bring it, where you bring a crusher in and you load materials into a crusher that's, that's processing and crushing where it's generating these clouds that on a continuous basis. You're right, if you pick up a load of stone and you dump it into a truck, there's gonna be a burst of something that comes off that stone. But, uh, you know, that these neighbors that are 1.3 miles away are gonna somehow feel that. It's possible that on a, on a given day, some dust might blow, but I think that's, that's, that's implicit in the definition of, of, of whatever that material, materials are. Again, remembering, these are all natural materials, so.
There are mediated butters, such as the rest of.
Yeah, there's, there's one unlawfully occupied condominium next door.
Well, let's not talk about that. Um, okay. Uh, the number of employees, tell me again, exactly how many employees are we talking about?
I'm going back to my, I'm going back to my thing. The maximum number of employees would be three employees. Now, those would not be employees working at the site. That's the three employees that come in, park their vehicles, get in the trucks, and go do their work. At, whenever something is being loaded, there would be one employee coming in with a truck and leaving with a truck, and there will be one employee who would do the loader. It could well be the same person that drives in with the truck, will get out of the truck, has, there's a, there's a mechanical security system on the loader, we'll, we'll start up the loader, go load his truck and leave again. They don't have an employer on site, waiting on site.
They don't have any employees that physically stay on the site?
No, they don't stay on the site. There's no, there's no building, there's no, there's no operation there, other than when somebody's coming onto the site to either deposit materials or to, uh, take away materials.
Okay, but if they do, are, for example, moving materials and not depositing into a truck, uh, or then this, then employee will be there for at least a certain amount, number of.
Well, I, I'll give it, for example, let's say, let's say somebody's coming in to deliver a load of stone to put in the bin.
Yeah.
There's, uh, there's no, there's no requirement for anybody to be there, other than the driver dropping the stone off. I get a text from my client, it's the same person. Whomever is coming in to manipulate the materials, drives in with a truck, gets out of the cab, goes over to the loader, punches in the code, starts up the loader, moves it in and out. The, the depositing of materials would be a truck, a stone truck coming in, lifting its tailgate, dropping a load of stone into the bin. Same thing with sand, same thing with T base or whatever the materials are. But, and I have to add, Andy, just, this is a satellite location for, for, for GFM. This is not their primary location. This is so they can have a location closer to their operations down Cape, that they can keep these materials, move them on and off, so they don't have to carry them out of town and back into town again, so.
Would, uh, is, is your client gonna hire any Wellfleet residents?
I, I, I can ask him who the, I mean, look, Greg Morris is a Truro native, just so you know. I mean, he, he hires people that have, that have CDL licenses to do the work. It may well be a Wellfleet person. I can ask him if he has any now, but.
I mean, does he need at this point to hire anybody?
I, I'm gonna wait for his text to come up. He has 22 employees right now, just so you know.
Just to put that question in the bin there, alright?
Yeah, okay, I'll ask him if he has any Wellfleet residents, but, but the answer, yes, is local residents who have CDL licenses, who are workforce people, are gonna be doing this work. It's not people coming to visit for the weekend, so.
So, and, and tell me, where is this work going to be performed offsite? In other words, where, where are you gonna be, where's your client go, be going to? Where's he gonna go to? Where's he coming from?
Uh, it, it, just to answer your question, right now, Greg Morris says he has one employee who's from Wellfleet right now. He has employees from P-Town and Truro. They're looking for more employees. They need it. The work for this site would be materials getting handled, pretty much P-Town to Orleans and back. Oh no, he's saying his employees are from P-Town to Orleans. And then all of the sites, Andy, are sites in which this building operations going on. If somebody buys a piece of land and Wellfleet needs the lot cleared, it goes there. If they need to, a lot of the work is replacing septic systems, including down Old Warf Road. So if somebody needs to replace septic down Old Warf Road, they'll take a load of stone down there.
It's not gonna be limited to Wellfleet, the work, correct?
No, of course not. No, of course not.
Uh, so, give me a range. I mean, we're talking about Eastham to Provincetown, we're talking about Orleans to Provincetown, Eastham.
This satellite yard would, the operational area would, for convenience for the drivers and, and, and the customers and everybody else, would be promised on to Orleans, meaning they may pick up a truck in Wellfleet in the morning, put some stone in it and drive towards Orleans and drive the truck back to Wellfleet at the end of the day. They might drive to P-Town, they'll, they'll certainly do work in Wellfleet, Truro, Eastham. It's, it's, it's a local market, if that's the question.
Okay, uh, one more question. Um, I'm gonna have a lot more, but let me just ask this. This has to do with traffic. So, um, you grew up in Wellfleet.
I did.
It's gotten worse since you left, in terms of traffic.
Well, since I left, I think it got, it got easier by one person, but, um, but I, I know the area well. That was my, I, all I can tell you is that was my bus stop. You know, I used to walk from Old Warf Point to that sign every morning, 1.3 miles. I left it, I left at 6:30 in the morning, got on the bus at 7:05.
You didn't have, you didn't have to take a left onto Route 6, you just had to wait for the bus. So my question.
I learned to drive, I rode my motorcycles, I lived at the end of Old Warf Point 35 years.
He's got a question for you.
And then let's, we gotta move, this is, this is gonna be, gonna be your all night.
Not the life.
So, you know, the difficulty, of course, is taking that left from either direction.
Yeah.
You can't guarantee, in fact, can you even state that no left turns are gonna be taken? From either northbound or southbound, uh, you know, you understand what I'm saying.
Uh, no, I, I don't. Are you, are you talking about leaving this worksite or leaving Old Warf Road?
I'm talking about leaving the facility.
Uh, uh, of course they'll take a left turn if they can take a left turn.
Oh, alright.
They, I, I, and there's no prohibition against, I mean, do you really want a 10-wheel dump truck taking a right on a Route 6 and then trying to pull a U-turn in front of the gas station? I mean, I, you know, this is a property with 250 feet of furniture on Route 6.
Alright, alright, you answered my question. Um, I have more, Madam Chair, but let's move on to someone else.
I, I have one question, Madam Chair, if possible.
Yes, of course, Mick.
It's kind of the 5,000 pound elephant in the room, is the question I have is, why was there such a rush to go in on a Saturday in the morning and clear cut this property and not wait till they make a phone call? Or not wait until they talk to the inspector? Because this is the reason we have 100 people at this meeting and at the last meeting. That has never been addressed, and you used the term last meeting unfortunate. I don't believe that, that, that clear cutting was egregious because the building inspector wasn't around. And I really wanna hear what the thinking was behind that and why they thought that was a good idea.
I, I can answer that, Mick.
Thank you.
First of all.
Appreciate it.
I, first of all, they shouldn't have done it. You know, and, and I'm not saying they shouldn't have done it for legal reasons, I'm saying they shouldn't have done it for practical reasons. Meaning, you're absolutely right, there wouldn't be the outcry that you're looking at right now if the site didn't look the way it does right now. That being said, if somebody had called me up on a Monday morning and said, this is what we wanna do, I would have looked at the Wellfleet bylaw and I would have said, look, there's no prohibition against removing those trees. I don't think that's quarrying. I don't think you need a permit to undertake this activity. If you do it, you do it at your own risk. The safer thing would be to go talk to the building inspector and get his opinion, and then we'd be here in the same place we are now, without the emotional and practical impediment of them doing it, so.
Okay, okay, but let me just say one thing about that, that not a lot. You wouldn't have pointed out to him that he has to leave 25% of the vegetation in the, in the, in the buffer zone and that Old Warf Road is, is a scenic road and needs.
That was my question.
Uh, yeah, I, look, I, you're absolutely right.
Permission from the planning authority. I mean, you would have pointed those things out to him had he called you.
I would have pointed, if, if, what I would have said was, leave 35 feet of buffer. Leave 35 feet of buffer, don't have big mounds of sand there, you know, maintain your natural planting, and, and look, but, but, but we're not in front of you on an enforcement order. We're in front of you asking for a special permit to operate this, so, um, you know, to answer the question, no, it wasn't done right. But that.
I mean, I just wanted, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify the law on that one, that, that there was, in fact, I'm not here to do the enforcement, but that was something that you would have pointed out as.
I, I would have said, I would have said, leave 35 feet, let's go talk to the building inspector. But I, but look, I, you know, and maybe I wouldn't even be here, maybe they wouldn't even have needed me to be here, but, um, but I don't think those are directly relevant to whether or not to grant a special permit. I think they have to do with, and again, Mick, I have to use the term again, I'm sorry, the unfortunate situation that we're in right now, so.
But, but then, I mean, you know, one of the, the factors that applies in this case is minimizing visibility.
Right.
What would you say about the clear cutting of the property with respect to minimizing visibility?
Well, look, the 6.1, 2.1, Andy, has a provision regarding perimeter buffering, okay? It says, it, it says, areas have to be separated from the right away by at least 35 feet in, in this district, okay? And then it said, yards shall be vegetated with, through retention of existing plants and trees, or where this is not, or where this is impossible, they have a certain set of standards. I, I think the bylaw requires vegetation, um, 35 feet deep off Route 6, or 20 feet, if you have 20, 20% of it is maintained with vegetative cover. I think we have to meet those requirements, and in fact, I think we're willing to go further than that. And to go back to Sharon's point, I, you know, they shouldn't have removed it. They shouldn't have. And they need to restore that, and they need to minimize this operation from, from visibility of Route 6 and, and from the surrounding neighborhood.
Would you, uh, I'm sorry, but, but you know, would you say that planting oak trees, uh, I thought they were 50 feet apart, uh, constitutes the minimization of, uh, visibility?
Well, there's a specific standard, Andy. I mean, the, the, the specific standard is, and, and, and I'm not sure how it goes in effect. It says, trees two feet in caliper sufficient number that if evenly spaced, which they need not be, their crowns would approximately meet each other at maturity. So, I, you know, I, I could bring in a landscape effort expert to, to prepare a plan that exactly meets that standard. I think we need more than that, personally. You know, I, I, I think the applicant should put some fencing on the backside on Wicksome Road, you know, which would, which would keep some noise separation there and, and, and some, some view separation. You know, if the board wants more vegetation, we're happy to do that. This, what I asked them to do and what Keith Fernandez did was to create a plan that met the bylaw requirements, that at maturity, the crowns will meet. You know, brush is three feet or more in height, continuous with, you know, with a maturity height of four feet. That's what's on that plan. If you're asking my personal opinion, Andy, I don't think it's enough.
No, no, I don't want a personal opinion. I'm, I'm, okay, I'm done. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna mute guys.
Okay. Can I reference what we're, we're just talking about here? The buffering 35 feet required, we just talked about that. The site plan from Ben, or from the applicant, uh, shows that the ex, the excavator storage area, the storage containment, container area, and the proposed storage area for supplies that's along Route 6, all three of those items are clearly indicated as being about 20 feet, 20.8 feet, uh, 20.8 feet off of the property line on the Route 6 side. So, if a 35-foot buffer is required, then those things would need to be 15 feet further into the property than they're currently shown on the site plan.
Well, there's a reason for that, Trevor, if I may, Sharon.
Yeah, please.
The next sentence says, alternatively, separation from Route 6 may be reduced to 20 feet. And separation from all other property lands may be, be reduced to five feet, provided that not less than 20% of the lot area is maintained with vegetative cover. So this plan, and, and the engineer did this, was designed to maintain 20% of the lot area in vegetative cover, so that that buffer from Route 6 could be 20 feet instead of 35 feet. So, this plan meets the bylaw.
I got a question, if I may jump in.
Yeah.
On, on the, the Old Warf Road, obviously, it doesn't meet the bylaw, the, the clearing and the vegetation, because that is a scenic byway. So that, that got clear cut the scenic byway, so what would the, how would that get remedied?
Mick.
And again, I, I, I understand it's, it, we're kinda jumping around a little bit, but I think it's important for people to hear that.
I think the question's fine, Mick, if I may. I, I, I don't have the bylaw in front of me, I'd have to review it again, but I believe the scenic bylaw says you can't cut any trees within, within a road layout without getting permission from the planning board, and I don't believe that they cut any trees within the road layout. If they did without getting permission from the planning board, then that's a violation of the scenic road bylaw.
Yeah.
But cutting trees on your own property, on a scenic road, I don't believe is governed by their law. And Mick, I'm gonna look that up while we speak, so I can correct myself during this hearing if I'm wrong.
Alright, and in that case, can we go to Jan?
Yeah, and I have a question immediately about what we just discussed.
Right.
The bylaw says that you can reduce the, uh, the, uh, separation from 35 feet in the front and 10 feet around the sides to 20 and 5. It says it may be reduced, is, may it be reduced just at the discretion of the applicant or the property owner, or is that up to the planning board, uh, the buildings or the zoning board to make that determination? Maybe that's a question through you, Sharon, to town council?
Or to the building inspector, either.
Okay.
This is a, it is a, if they didn't need a special permit, they would still need to be maintaining that buffer, even if any use.
They can reduce.
Yeah, so.
If I may, if I may, Sharon, my reading of that bylaw is that those perimeter buffering requirements are not special permit granting requirements or variance granting requirements. They're absolute requirements for perimeter buffering of lots along Route 6 and other places for commercial use.
That's my.
And that they, and they set specific standards for how you buffer, and then they say you may reduce them from 35 to 20 if you maintain a certain amount of vegetative cover. I don't think there's a discretionary component to the way that that, that bylaw is. I don't think it says you can reduce it from 30 to 25 if someone gives you a permit to do it.
No, but I think it says, it says somebody has to determine that you have, in fact, maintained a, maintained a vegetative.
I think, yeah, I think the building inspector has to review your site plan to ensure compliance. Yeah, I agree.
Attorney Zander, I really wasn't asking Attorney Zander, I was asking, our town council or our building inspector?
Yeah, and I would.
Understood.
I would say it would be the building inspector's question. Paul, do you wanna weigh in on that one, or Jonathan, yeah?
You gotta, uh, unmute him.
I know.
Oh, well, while we're unmuting Paul, I'd also, just like, because this is relevant to what we're talking about, can, if Ben could at some point, either before or after Paul, explain what, what, or show us what the 20% of the lot that was supposed to be maintained vegetative, exactly where is that 20%? Because when you drive by there, it doesn't look like there's 20% of it left.
Okay, we got Paul unmuted, so Paul, do, can you weigh in on that 20 versus 35?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. The, so, that's correct, it can be reduced to 20%. If 20% of the, uh, vegetative cover is maintained, it can be reduced to 20 feet. But there's conflicting in the intensity of use schedule for the commercial district. Uh, if you look at foot, on the 100-foot minimum yard setback, there's a footnote, 19, that says 25% of the required front yard must be maintained with vegetative cover.
Right.
Um, I think that's, that's.
That might be more confusing, but I'm sorry, but.
Okay, no, it's, it's clearly more vegetation than has been maintained.
I'm just still wondering, who gets to decide? The, the applicant at will?
Let Jonathan answer that one. Can we unmute Jonathan, Chris?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would agree with the building inspector, um, i- in, in the sense to your question, Jan. If this were, uh, a, a use on a project or on a piece of land that didn't require any sort of permit, and someone had clear-cut trees, the building inspector going down the road could then determine you didn't follow the 20% guideline, but rule in the bylaw, and issue a cease and desist order. I think the board can in, um, in a request for a special permit, point that out as you're doing to the applicant and say, you know, as we're considering the special permit, you have to comply with all other aspects of the bylaw, but as a general matter, if there was no special permit application, or if it was a use allowed as of right, I think it would be within the discretion of the building inspector to either enforce or advise the landowner that they must keep that 20%. It, it would be, it would be within the discretion of the landowner, say, if they, it was a use allowed as of right, or they, they did. It, it would be, it would be within the discretion of the landowner, say, if they, it was a use allowed as of right, or they, they didn't require any sort of relief, but the, the building inspector. Need force under chapter forty A, if they did that, if they. Clear so much that they were in violation.
Okay. Can, may I keep going, Madam Chair? Okay, so, um, it regards to the definition of a contractor's yard, I agree with Attorney Reed's interpretation of that. Uh, I think that that definition describes something far more passive than what is gonna go on in this yard. Um, and I don't believe for a second that the drafters of that definition envisioned what's gonna go on here. Um, I'd like to know where that leaves the board, uh, does this use fit neatly into, uh, industry light? No, not, not quite neatly, but if something doesn't fit neatly, we, we can, we have the ability to say it's most like. Something, so I, again, I think this is a question to town council through you, Madam Chair. I, you know, I think it is most like industry light in, in some aspects. Can we require a, a special permit for that?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, may I just ask one clarifying question with Attorney Zender?
Sure.
Attorney Zender, my understanding is that, so as I read your original application for twenty-one fifteen, there was three requests, one for bulk storage open. One for industrial light, which referred to the processing, and one for multiple principal uses, right?
Yes.
And we're no longer considering, the boards are no longer considering the industrial light, correct?
The board's no longer considering industrial light as it applies to processing of stone, processing of topsoil.
And you're, and you are not requesting a special permit for industrial light for the underlying contractor's use, correct?
We did not, because the building inspector in his determination determined that the proposed use. Was a contractor's yard with bulk storage open, and that a permit was required for bulk storage open, I don't believe the question of whether it's industrial light is before the board rating. He already issued his determination, and the board upheld it.
Jan, i- in my opinion, what's before the board right now. Is an application for a special permit for bulk storage open, an application for multiple principal uses. I would recommend and advise the board that. The distinction between a contractor's yard and light industrial is not a decision for the board to make tonight. That's a decision for the building inspector, who, if this applicant starts using this property. Um, the building inspector could then determine that the use is too intense to meet the definition of a contractor's yard and issue an enforcement order. Now, that doesn't mean, and I would recommend the board can consider the proposed use in the context of bulk storage open, certainly. You know, how are they going to manipulate the materials on site, and will that cause dust and everything like that? But I would recommend, I would advise the board that the decision of whether or not this is contractor's yard or light industrial is not yet before the board. That's a decision for the building inspector at some later date.
Okay. Okay, next question, there is a proposed six-foot fence. Um, it, I see the notation along the Route Six frontage, it's unclear to me what the applicant is proposing, are they proposing a, a, a six-foot fence around the entire property? Uh, what kind of fencing material are they proposing, is there gonna be a gate, is it gonna be a locked, how is trespassing gonna be prevented?
Through you, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, the, the, the proposed fence along the front, it would be whatever material the board wants. Um, we did not anticipate having a locked gate coming in off the truck, off the highway, because that would involve having trucks having to stop. Unlock, open, and close the gate, and frankly, there's really nothing stealable in there, you know, trucks are locked, the loader is locked. And the materials are, you know, of low enough value, if somebody's gonna try to steal a load of materials, I guess they will. So, um, the purpose of the fence, and we're willing to also put a fence around the back if the board wants, is really just to. Provide some screening of the operation from either the developed properties next door or Route Six, but the type of fence could be whatever the board wants, and we're happy to clarify that on the plan.
Is it gonna be lighting?
No.
Okay. Um, in building, the building inspector's, uh, two, uh, February eleventh letter, he requested a clarification of the contour line. That shows, I, I think it's a grade level contour line, I don't know from contour lines, but it runs through the old foundation, and he wanted an explanation of that. Has that been satisfied? And I guess that's a question for the building inspector through you, Sharon.
Yeah, okay. Have you got your?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I still have not gotten an answer on that.
So I'd certainly like an answer to that, and, uh, how deep is this foundation, this pit? And then.
I, I can, yeah, I can get an answer to that question, yeah, that's an existing contour line, um, that runs, um, around the outside of that foundation and, and runs, runs through there, um. I, I'm waiting for a text from my client as to how deep that foundation is, I don't know, and as soon as that comes up, I'll answer the question.
It's, it's around like eight or ten feet.
Ten feet.
Yeah.
About ten.
I, I would have guessed ten feet.
Yeah, and, and the proposal is to fence the foundation for security, for security purposes, sixteen.
Better fencing than, than what's there now?
Yeah.
There's no fencing there, they'll, they'll fence it to secure it, they don't have plans to use it right now, it's, I'm sorry, I, I've been told it's ten feet by my client. Ten feet, and so I think the member's correct. And then, if the board wants it fenced, we can fence it to secure it, you know, as a, you know, so it's not an attractive nuisance. But there's no plan to use the foundation, but there's no plan to, to eliminate it or fill it in, because it may provide some utility in the future. And if there is a use of the foundation for some other use, it would have to come back before this board as, as a multiple principal use.
Okay, in that same letter, the building inspector asked for a more detailed plan, and he listed, uh, quite a number of things, uh, again, through you, Sharon, to the building inspector. Um, does he feel that this plan has everything on it that he requested? And I can read what he requested if anybody wants me to.
Please do.
Sure, location, number of parked vehicles, GVW, and, uh, would someone explain GVW a vehicle? Which definitely hasn't been given to us, driveway details, existing and proposed contour lines, cuts and fills, grades on adjoining properties and highways. Screening requirements, swales and erosion control measures, I don't think it's all there, but again, I'm not a plan expert.
Paul, have you gotten anything other than what we've seen?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just, just the plan that you have before you. Which should be provided from a registered land surveyor.
Yes.
And it hasn't been. Also, the contour lines is, it's conflicting information, contour line running through the foundation, whether that was gonna be backfilled or, uh, left alone, so.
Okay, so the plan doesn't show everything the building inspector would like, uh, I'd like to know, I'd like to understand these storage containers, what, are we talking metal, like shipping containers, what's gonna be in these containers?
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get an answer from my client, I believe there's storage containers that go offsite to the job site, so that people can put materials and tools and things inside of them, they rent them out.
I'd like to know if they're gonna be empty when they're on this site, if not, what's gonna be in them?
I'll find out.
And how many are gonna be there?
Yeah.
It's, it can be stored for. I'm just getting a text from my client, says it's gonna be one container, and it's how you're gonna have storage for tools.
One container only, okay. And we can.
Shipping?
A metal storage container, not for shipping, for storage. Yeah.
Like, well, yeah, like a shipping container, like on a ship.
Like, like a lockable metal, you've seen, like pods, it's a metal container that's locked, and it would, it would, it would hold tools onsite, so the employees have access to the tools down cave that they can take with them.
Right.
One, in a, one container.
Uh, so I, I was looking at, uh, GFM's website, they do demolition. I'd like to know if they intend to store demolition debris here, do they intor, intend to store, uh. Debris-filled topsoil, which is something they talk about on their website, and asphalt that's gonna be recycled?
No, the answer is no to all those questions.
And so that would be part of perhaps conditions, okay, um. Uh, I'm, I'm getting there, okay, subassembly.
Time.
I'd like to understand, I know nothing about your business, maybe other board members do, but I'd like to understand subassemblies that are gonna be fabricated here. And what.
The bylaw talks about fabrication of subassemblies, there's no intention to fabricate onsite, but they will have components onsite stored onsite. Smaller components, you know, as I explained at the last hearing, you know, if they're installing a septic system. The, the major components of the septic system are delivered directly to the site by the, by the precast manufacturer, the septic tanks, et cetera. But they could store PVC pipe here, they could store risers, you know, to bring the septic systems up to grade, you know, usually have, you know, one foot, two foot, three foot risers. Um, they could be storing, um, you know, small connector components, um, that they're going to be, uh, that they're gonna be taking to the site. So they're, they're the smaller components of the septic system to be stored on site.
Okay, but your narrative said there was gonna be subassemblies fabricated, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, they're telling me, they're telling me there's no fabrication, no fabrication on the site.
So all these, all these supplies are gonna store here, I mean, they're just not gonna get here by somebody wiggling their nose, so they're gonna be delivered only by employees of this company, or are they gonna be delivered by other companies? So during the day. A company's gonna be dropping off parts for, you know, cement parts for a septic system, or whatever.
Yes, so, so, somebody could come by and deliver risers, and they could be stored on the site, that's, I mean, that's the nature of a contractor's yard, you're, you're taking in materials that you use offsite somewhere else.
Okay, I understand that, but we were told that employees would be coming, you know, in the morning, loading up the truck, maybe back in the afternoon, then, you know, going home and leaving. Picking up their pickup trucks and going home, but that's really not completely what will be happening.
My client's telling me that ninety percent of the materials will be delivered to the site by employees of GFM. And, and most, um, most materials are delivered directly to the job site.
Okay. Uh, the ten-wheelers that they're gonna keep here, are those dump trucks? And I'd like to know what they weigh.
Well, I, I think the narrative said it's a one-ton, it's a one-ton, hold on one second, let me just, let me just find out, bear with me. It's two one-ton trucks and two ten-wheelers, and I'm gonna wait for the ten-wheeler weight to come in for my client. Uh, he said sixty, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that's a. I'm just waiting, bear with me, Jan. Yeah, that'll be a sixty, those would be sixty-ton ten-wheelers.
Sixty tons, so those are considered commercial vehicles by our zoning bylaw definition?
All of the vehicles coming onto the site would be commercial vehicles.
Yeah, so I just wanna, we're not gonna just, you know, we can't, we can't determine this, but I'm still not convinced this isn't a transport yard, okay, um. Employee parking, I don't see any, any indication of employee parking, uh, are there gonna be sanitary facilities on this?
No sanitary facilities.
Okay, are you gonna store diesel fuel, flammable materials, uh, solvents, lubricants?
No.
Are these, um, is there work gonna be done on these vehicles on the site?
No. I mean, look, if a truck breaks down onsite, they have to ask a mechanic to come in and, and fix it to get it offsite, possibly, but it's not a, it's not a yard intended or to be used for, for repairing or working on vehicles.
So we don't think there's gonna be solvents, lubricants, diesel fuel?
It, within the vehicles themselves, they have, they have tanks that hold those types of materials, but they won't be storing materials for use in the vehicles.
Okay, I think I'm almost done, I have one, perhaps one more question, uh, no, that got answered, I think you're done with me by now, um, for now.
Thank you.
Yep, I think we're good, thank you.
Thanks.
Can I ask, um, Mr. Zender one question?
Certainly, certainly.
Uh, with respect to, uh, noise and dust, um, remaining essentially on the, the premises. Uh, how, how are you, you know, uh, going to explain that when it's pretty obvious it's gonna be a loud operation? In terms of, in terms of backup, you know, of vehicles and, you know, the, the beep-beep thing, and, and all that.
Well, that's, well, first of all, loud is a subjective, this is objective statement, but the bylaw permits as of right, a contractor's yard, which necessarily implicates commercial vehicles. And, and work in that yard in this district, and, and bulk storage open is permitted by special permit, and bulk storage. Again, requires commercial vehicles to handle and move the materials, and so, I don't think the question for the board is whether it's loud, it's whether it's, it's appropriate for the commercial district.
Well, it's, but noise is a, a factor in the definition of what light industrial and heavy industrial is.
First of all, I would, I would, I, I take issue with the fact that it's light or heavy industrial, but if, e- even if it's lighter heavy industrial, the definition says no objectionable noise. Um, you know, every use in this town, whether it's the restaurant next door or a retail shop, is going to generate a certain amount of noise, litter. Uh, water, energy, every use generates some use, it's not whether or not you can hear it. It's whether or not it's, 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 it's appropriate for the use that's permitted in that particular zoning district.
Could I ask one more quick question?
Of course you can.
And through you, Sharon, to Attorney Reed, um, I was, uh, this is in reference to something he said in his letter about, he felt that this proposal could qualify. Uh, for a development of significant impact of the Cape Cod Commission, does the zoning board have any part to play in that?
That was a question for you, or Jonathan?
Jonathan, question for me?
Yes, you could ask the answer to that question, or we could direct it to Attorney Reed.
Uh, while, I, while that may be true, and, and to be candid, I don't know if that's a, this project qualifies for commission review, that's not within the jurisdiction of the board at the moment. I think we would need to just contain the analysis to the zoning bylaw.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Madam Chair, I, I'm not gonna jump in, but I, I do have a few project questions, and I'll, I'll let the board go, but I have a few that haven't been asked, so at some point, I ask.
Yes, you certainly may, and I'll see if, did I have anyone from the board who wants to take those questions before you, you go to town council? Seeing no hands, go ahead.
Um, Attorney Zender, can you just explain, because, so if I were on the site and I was looking at this pile of material, is it contained in something, or is it just on the ground?
The, the answer is it doesn't have to be contained in something, the applicant would rather contain it. Meaning, what they would rather do is the typical practice is to stack concrete blocks in, in a, in, in, in bins. It makes the handling of the materials easier by the trucks, and also it separates the materials, they don't get, they don't get, you know, cross-contaminated. Um, so, my client's telling me that the, the piles of materials would be limited to, um. I'm just gonna give you the heights, because I think the board would wanna hear this, because I think the piles are there much higher than what we would be seeing with an operation. It's, I'm just bearing, getting down there. I believe it's twelve feet for, um, sand and eight feet for stone, but I'm just gonna get it one second. Um, I'll, I'll ask him, Greg, if you don't mind, just, just let me know that again. So, the answer is, I think it would be better for the community and for the applicant to, to install. Bins in a location approved on a plan by the board, but it doesn't have to be, if the board doesn't want those bins, we don't have to do that.
So I guess my, my other question was, when, when asked earlier about, uh, security on the site and about fence and having a gate, you had alluded to, um. You know, there's nothing really to steal on the site, which, which may be true, but what, what about, um, keeping people off the site, trespassers, or children, or people climbing on the piles, or on the equipment, or anything like that? Is there any sort of standard security practice?
You, I mean, you can fence, um, you know, we could, if the, look, if the board wants, we could put a security gate in there, do that, it just, it, it, it's just gonna, um. It's gonna ma- make, it's gonna mean that those trucks have to stop coming off the highway and, and manage the gate, so we could do, they could do it.
Well, the gate wouldn't have to necessarily be in line with the perimeter gate, it could be within the property.
It could be further, and yeah, look, if the board wants a, a gate, um, we could certainly do that, Jonathan, um, yeah, the stone in the bin would be six to eight feet tall, and sand in a pile would be twelve feet tall. So that's roughly the half the height of a, of a, you know, the permitted house in, in Wellesley.
And, and Madam Chair, I just have two.
Sure.
Two questions, um, does the, does the applicant, um, intend, or do they use any sort of dust mitigation plan at any of their other sites?
I'm, 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 uh, he's listening, he's gonna, he's gonna answer this. Um, I don't think dust mitigation is ever really used in, in straight material storage. Because the only time it's agitated is when it's being loaded in under a truck, it's not like a process facility where, you know, like, screening lawn, crushing concrete, crushing ABC, where you're, you're generating it. They would have to install a water well, they would have to install irrigation, they would have to do something, I, I think watering is the way that you keep dust down, and you do do that in commercial applications where you're processing. But, um, not, not for just straight storage of landscaping materials.
And, and my last question was, was to that point, you kind of beat me to it, where there's going to be, um, truck traffic, whether it be. whether it be daily, multiple times a day, and there's going to be filling. You know, I guess there is a concern, you've probably seen it, I've definitely seen it, where mud and dirt and materials get caught on these trucks and then drag it out into the public way, they dry and fall off. So does the applicant have used, whether it's here or anywhere else, a wheel wash station or some sort of, do they have a policy or procedure um, that they use for employees to clean off the trucks, you know, how do we dust down?
I'm asking him, he's, Jonathan, he's listening to you as we speak and so he's answering these questions for me. So, um, they're saying they can put in irrigation if the, if the, if the board wants them to put in irrigation. It would involve digging a well, putting in a pump station and all that. And then what they'll do is they'll put stone in the roadway so that when the trucks pass over the stone, things will drop. Um, you know, most of the materials there are stone and sand or, you know, this is not a muddy environment out here. It's a sandy environment. But there, there's, they can certainly put a certain length of stone leading from the material handling part to the, uh, to the, to the highway and that would clean the tires by traveling over the stone. They put half inch native stone, for example. I'm not, and, and one more thing, I'm not sure the board wants them to be washing stage, washing the trucks or washing the wheels on site. You know, I think that just takes whatever's on the, on the trucks and drops it on the site. So I don't think they're going to want to do that. They do wash and maintain, Greg does a really nice job of washing and maintaining his trucks, but he does that at the, at the repair facility in Dennis where they have their, their yard.
Madam Chair, I promise one last question, if you don't mind. As, as I, as we, Ben and I talk, can you just clarify how, not the curb cut, but the, the entrance into the facility, how wide is that?
Um, I, I, you know, I don't have, I don't have the curb cut plan in front of me, Jonathan. I, it's, it's noted on that. I forget what it is, but I'm going to try to pull it up while we talk and just get the measurement.
Perhaps as other people ask questions, if you.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm working on it.
Well, I guess my, my, my true question is, you know, we're going to have one ton, 60-ton vehicles. You know, if we have an instance where one needs to leave and one needs to enter, is that curb cut in, in the entrance wide enough to allow for multiple vehicles to pass or is it one, one at a time?
I, I'm, I'm looking at that right now. I, I'm assuming if one's coming off the highway, the one coming out will back up and allow them in, you know, so they have room to get in. They, they tend to work cooperatively, but I, I'm, I'm pulling that plan up as we speak.
Yeah, the entrance looks like it's one inch and one inch equals 20 feet.
Madam Chair, appreciate the latitude. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Um, let me see where I am with the board now. Yeah, that curb cut is very vague on the plan.
Uh, through you, Madam Chairperson, if I may?
Yes.
Um, we've heard a lot from Attorney Zander and about whether a light industry or contractor's yard. Would it be possible to hear from Attorney Reed? What, because I really wanted to hear again what he had to say about why he did not agree that this was a contractor's yard.
Um, the, the problem, the, I, and we certainly can, but as I understand from town council right now, we are considering a permit for bulk storage. Um, if we determine that we don't give them a permit for bulk storage, then they become by default a contractor's yard. At that point, it is up to the building inspector to determine that what they're doing on that site is in fact a contractor's yard and is not something else.
Okay, that makes sense.
And if he, if it became something other than a contractor's yard, he would then have to issue yet again a cease and desist order until we went forward from that. Am I correct on that, Jonathan?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So that's why I'm not asking that question because we don't really have that before us right now. What we have right now is the thing, but I will give Attorney Reed the chance to speak since he has his hand up. And has been very patient about that. So if you could unmute Attorney Reed, Chris.
There you go.
Thank you. Um, a couple of points, if I may. There is an application before you asking for a special permit for industry light. Unless the applicant is asking you to withdraw that application, you have to act on it. And therefore you have to determine tonight, or whenever you get to your final decision, whether what he's asking for qualifies as that use and therefore whether it qualifies for the special permit. Until he withdraws that, it is respectfully still before you. In addition, the third special permit application before you is for permission to have multiple principal uses on one site. And the multiple principal uses that have been identified are contractor's yard, bulk storage and/or light industry. So I think in the context of the third special permit for multiple uses, you do need to decide whether what is proposed is in fact a contractor's yard within the definition of the bylaw. Because if you don't decide that, you can't decide whether to grant that special permit for multiple uses because it's undeniably one of the multiple uses requested. So I, I respectfully disagree with town council and with Ben Zender on whether that's on the table before you. I think it has to be in both the context of the pending special permit application that the applicant filed asking for special permit for light industry and also in the context of the third special permit application for multiple uses. If there are multiple uses, one of them is quote unquote contractor's yard. And if you agree with me and do not find that what's proposed is in fact a contractor's yard, you can't, can't or should not grant that special permit. With respect to the Cape Cod Commission question, the uh, development of regional impact category that I cited to you is outdoor use. And it's defined in the regulations that I copied to you with my letter as a, an area for the total project area of 40,000 square feet or more. And the total project area is in turn defined as the area of the site that is altered or disturbed in connection with the proposed use. Based upon what I see there, what I see in the plan and, and what is apparently ex, uh, completely obliterated on the site is well more than 40,000 square feet of this 60-plus thousand square feet site. So if you find that more than 40,000 square feet has been disturbed as part of the site alteration and site disturbance, then it is a mandatory referral to the Cape Cod Commission, at which time your authority to proceed with any vote is suspended uh, and stayed until the commission acts, after which you will have to come back to this eventually and make these decisions. But i- it's not just something I threw out there. It's based upon the information, the little information as to area that was provided. And my supposition from the plan that at least 40,000 square feet of the 60,000 square feet plus site has already been altered and disturbed.
Madam Chair.
Lastly, on, if I may, just on, on Ben's points, uh, I do not agree that the definition of industry or industrial use is necessarily limited to changing the form of any of the products. It doesn't say that. It says processing of materials, not changing their form, not manufacturing them. The word manufacturing isn't in there at all. It just says processing. And that's different from the rather passive activity of simply storing such as for retail or wholesale sale. And I think they are processing of these materials, not only the ones that come on the site from there on the site, but also don't forget the materials that they're removing from customer sites and bringing here in order to do something with either recycling them or reprocessing or disposing or just plain using them again. I think that is processing of materials. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Jan.
I, I still don't understand if the zoning board has any part to play in directing this, if indeed it even qualifies, directing this project to the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact. I, I, I don't know that we, I, I don't understand how it would get referred to begin with. Do we have any part to play in that?
If I may add some, the, the answer is yes. You are the authority to whom an application has been filed. And if you decide that it meets that threshold of site disturbance and site alteration in excess of 40,000 square feet for an outdoor use, then you must refer it to the Cape Cod Commission. And at that time, you should take a vote to do so. There are forms to be filled out, processing the information and sending it to the commission. But at that point, your authority to proceed any further is stopped.
Madam Chair, could I ask through you if town council could explain why he maybe doesn't think it's in our purview to do this?
Well, with, with, I, I certainly don't, uh, question Attorney Reed's interpretation of the commission regulations. I am not aware if what has done, been done to the site as of right now would fall under the commission's authority. With that said, and I would defer to the chair, perhaps it appears that we may be continuing because there seems to be a lot of missing information. And I would be happy to provide a, an opinion to the board on whether or not they should. I would just question as, as Attorney Reed and Attorney Zender knows, um, there are specific deadlines for the board to act under chapter 40A. And I don't want to get into a situation where the board inadvertently grants by construction um, this application. So I, I don't think that, that's something for the moment.
Madam Chair?
Um, wait, I, I want to get to Andy first, Ben. Andy, you have to unmute. Wait, wait, Andy has to unmute. Chris, can you unmute Andy? Chris?
My unmute thing is not working. I'm sorry, it's not working.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Yeah, Attorney Reed, you attached to your letter, this is with respect to the Cape Cod Commission, uh, would look, what appears to be a proposed ordinance. So, um, um, my question is, is there an ordinance that's in effect upon which you rely?
That is, if that is the ordinance that is passed and is recorded in the registry deeds.
You're saying, you're affirmatively saying that that it is?
Yes, that's my, that is from their website and, and it's my understanding that that is the only one that is existing at this time and it is in effect.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I, I have to agree with, with David, Attorney Reed, uh, on his interpretation of the commission regulations. And I'll, I'll affirm to Andy as well that that is in fact the ordinance that, that has the, the threshold triggers for mandatory development of regional impact. And I'll also agree with Attorney Reed that if in fact the proposal is for either the construction of buildings of 10,000 square feet or more, or in this case, you know, a site development of 40,000 square feet or more, that this board has the obligation to refer the matter to the Cape Cod Commission as a mandatory development of regional impact. Um, I think what we owe the board is a site plan. What we'll do is we will tighten up the site plan and present it to you showing that the area in development is less than 40,000 square feet because we're not proposing to use all of the site for this, for this use. It's not the amount that's been disturbed. It's the amount that's proposed to be developed for the purposes of the operation itself. And so you can certainly disturb part of a site as part of your building and then replant it later. That wouldn't count towards your 40,000 square feet. It's the amount of area that is converted from vegetative state to a developed area for outdoor storage and outdoor uses. So, um, before the board determines whether or not to refer this to the Cape Cod Commission, we'd like the opportunity to present you a site plan that shows that the development area is less than 40,000 square feet.
All right, I'm going to take a sense of things right now. Clearly, you know, it's, it's 1024. Um, there is much yet to be said. I did not want to have to continue this again. But I feel that I have no choice. I will defer to my board members on that. But if we are going to con- continue it, there are a lot of things that I would like to see. I would like to see a site plan from a surveyor. I would like to see all of those things that Paul asked for from the applicant on that site plan. You know, much better, I mean, for example, you're showing, um, storage units, storing of materials 10 feet off the property line. It's not going to happen. We're not going to allow anybody to store stuff. Even Bay Sails Marine doesn't get to store its boats on the setback. I know you say it's a building setback, but it's trust, that needs to be 35 feet off those back lines. I would like to see, I would like a withdrawal of the, a request for light industry. If we're not going to consider light industry, then we need to get that withdrawn out of, out of the plan so that we're not considering it. We don't have to go back and forth on whether or not it's, it's light industry. There are a lot of other questions that Jan asked you and that Andy asked you. But clearly we don't have, we still don't really have much. I mean, you're getting texts from your client, which is great. But, you know, why isn't this all written down for us? This should be in our pocket. This should be what we're looking at. I'm going to play a Bruce here and say, you know what? I'm going to channel Drucker and say, listen, you know, we needed far more information on this plan and what they were going to do. I do have a question. Your client has it, has a satellite place in Truro, yes?
They have, they have, they do have an operation in Truro right now, yes.
So the drive is from Wellfleet to Truro, not from Wellfleet, not from Dennis to Wellfleet.
But they're leasing a property from somebody in Truro that they may not be able, they may not be able to have that lease in the future. This is a site that, that works for them.
Okay.
And, and to answer one point Sharon, look, you know, I can't anticipate what questions the board's going to ask.
No, no, but you know, Ben, that, that site plan isn't even a surveyor's site plan.
Well, look, and first of all, one other point is the questions that Paul was asking, there were two sets of questions he asked. The questions he was asking in that email that Jan referred weren't questions about a special permit application. There were questions he was asking for review of a plan to restore the site in advance of the special permit hearing. He wanted particular, and we elected not to go ahead and do the restoration in advance because we didn't know what the board wanted. So a lot of those questions had nothing to do with a special permit application. So, you know, look, we're certainly happy to take notes and provide additional information, but I, you know, for a by right plan, I, I think this plan's pretty good. You know, for a, for a special permit plan, we fully anticipated this board would come in and say, look, we want to see something else. You know, your, your statement of 35 feet off a property is a great, something for us to take with us. I think where we are in this process, I think this plan is fine. So I'm more frankly, I'm more interested in whether we should be spending more money on this or if this board is predisposed to not grant the permit in the first place. We're not going to go spend thousands of dollars on more site plans if we have a member, a board of five members of which three don't think that this is an approval project. So, and that's where I, I kind of am. And I think, you know, your town council kind of indicated the same thing. You know, we need to keep an eye on the grant timeframes and everything else. So, um, with regard to the light industry, um, I have no problem withdrawing that application. Uh, you know, that application was specifically and in the application, a light industry permit for screening topsoil. It wasn't a light industry application for something that we don't believe is light industry. So I, you know, I can tell you, we will be withdrawing that application at the end of this process, but I'm not going to do it until we, we come to the end of this process. But that's, so.
So I'm going to go to the board now as to where you are right now. Um, Mick?
Yeah, okay, um, it's three and a half hours later and I know we've listened to town council, we've listened to Attorney Reed. Where I'm at with this right now, I do not believe this is a contractor's yard. I feel this falls into heavy industry. Um, we, there's a lot of word salad going on with words like production, assembly, processing. I've been in the trades my whole life. I've worked in scaffolding, I've built houses, I've painted them. I know what a contractor's yard and I know what a heavy industrial yard is. This is not a, for my definition, as somebody who's been in the trades, it's not a contractor's yard. And, and then there is the application for multiple principal uses. We don't know what those multiple princes uses are. So very hard to give a permit on something you don't know what's going to be. So, I guess I'm a no at this point.
Okay, Trevor?
I am, I'm still hung up on that 20% thing. And I think I'd like, because I, I don't believe that 20% of the existing vegetation has been maintained on that property. Um, and if we are going to be discussing a special permit for bulk storage, then I think we will need to make sure that all aspects of the bylaw being followed. Uh, and, you know, if, if, if 20% hasn't been maintained, then that front setback, as I noted earlier, would have to be increased to 35 feet. Um, so I'd like to see some kind of documentation that, that, that convinces me that 20% of the vegetation has been maintained because at this point I'm not convinced of that.
Thanks, Trevor.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know if we want to discuss contractor's yard or not. You know, I, I, I tend to disagree with Mick and You know, I, I tend to disagree with Mick and I feel that it would qualify as a contractor's yard. But that's a, that's a by right use anyway. So I, I am of the opinion that they would, they would need to undertake that use and then have the building inspector issue a cease and desist if he felt that it went beyond the bounds of that.
Andy?
Did you say me?
Yep, I did.
Hard to hear, actually.
That's what they're telling me.
Yeah, you're very hard to hear tonight, Sharon.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I don't know why. I keep trying to raise it up, but it doesn't work.
Well, I, I have some significant issues with this and I think that you know, we're balancing here. And we're looking at a lot of different bylaws that are applicable. First of which is the, are the district objectives. And I don't see how we're gonna, number one, preserve landscaping or minimize visibility of the parked vehicles or avoid creation of traffic dust, perhaps other, perhaps other effects on the aquifer. That's one. I, I think when you go to eight point four point two, that the detriments outweigh the benefits. I, I don't really see where the town is gonna be benefiting to the extent that it's gonna offset the impact that this operation's gonna have on VRs, the rest, the residents is right behind it. And, and again, the fact that no reasonable efforts have been made to minimize visibility. In fact, it was just the opposite that occurred. And it's very troubling to me that, that that did happen. And, but nevertheless, I think it, it's impacted that issue. And so if I had to vote now, I would vote no on the bulk storage. If that's the only thing at issue, I don't even think that is the only thing at issue, but I would vote no.
Jan?
Well, I agree with everything that everyone has said so far. And I would also say that on several other occasions when Attorney Zender has appeared before us with other projects, recommended that the board ask themselves the question, is this project more detrimental to the neighborhood? And I've asked myself that question many times. And it, in my opinion, it is more detrimental to the neighborhood. It's more offensive to the neighborhood. It's, I think it will reduce property values for the direct abutters. There's gonna be dirt, there's gonna be dust, there's gonna be more traffic congestion. We put a security fence there, which I think we have to do. A six-foot fence isn't gonna keep anybody out, to tell you the truth. I don't think a security fence will either. I think it's for the neighborhood. So I guess you know where I'm going with this.
Thanks, Jeff.
And so am I. Can you hear me, guys? No?
Yep. I hear you loud and clear.
Okay, okay. And, and, and where I've been all week with this is do the benefits outweigh the detriment? And that for us is often a very academic question. If somebody wants to extend their deck, there are no benefits to the town, but there are no detriments to anybody particularly either. And so we, we sort of go along with it. But in this case, I can't, I can't list many benefits. I, I don't think that these contractors having a a shorter ride does anything for the town of Wellfleet. And, and the employment of two people as opposed to all of the employees at VRs or the motel or the other restaurants, it just doesn't, it doesn't pan out. So I, you know, I don't think bulk storage is an appropriate use on this lot. I, you know, it, it may by right be able to be a contractor's yard and then that's gonna be something the building inspector's gonna have to deal with as far as what it is. But I don't think I'm hearing anybody in this, on this board wanting to give a special permit for either light industry or bulk storage. I think that's where we are, Ben.
Well, you know, and I, and I have to thank the board. I always do. I thank you guys no matter what at the end. And I thank you for putting the time and this syrup you're putting into this. Then I would ask you just to take your votes on all the applications that are in front of you.
Okay, I have my findings, so I will, I will ask for a move to go to findings.
I'll make a motion to move to findings.
Okay, I need a second.
Should we close the public hearing first?
Okay, make them.
I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, Sharon? Aye. Trevor? Mick?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
And Andy?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Now I need a motion to go to findings.
I will make a motion to go to findings.
Second.
Sharon, aye. Jan?
Aye.
Mick?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
And Trevor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Application under Massachusetts general law, section four oh forty eighth, S five, S nine, and Wellfleet zoning bylaw eight point four point two for bulk storage, open special permit for open storage of sand, loam, T base and stone. And for industry light, special permit for screening of sand and topsoil in the commercial zoning district and for a special permit pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw five point four point thirteen for multiple principal uses in the commercial district, i.e. contractor's yard, bulk storage, open and industry light. The lot is in the commercial district. The lot consisted of an open foundation for an abandoned storage unit project and fencing but was otherwise vegetated and unimproved. Applicant intends to lease the property to GFM Enterprises, GFM, for the operation of a contractor's yard and contractor's business. In the operation of its business, GFM intends to store bulk supplies on the property, including steel plates, precast riser, piping, outdoor containers, rebar, concrete panels, sand, loam, T base and stone. GFM also intends to screen loam and topsoil on the premises for its use as a building contractor. Wellfleet zoning bylaw two point one defines a contractor's yard as premises used by a building contractor or subcontractor principally for the storage of equipment and supplies, fabrication of sub assemblies or parking of wheeled equipment. Pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw five point three point two, contractor's yard is allowed as of right in the commercial district. Wellfleet zoning bylaw two point one defines bulk storage open as exposed outside storage of sand, lumber, coal or other bulk materials or supplies. Pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw five point three point three, bulk storage open requires a special permit in the commercial district. Wellfleet zoning bylaw two point one defines industry light as fabrication and assembly, processing, finishing work or packaging in such a manner that noise, dust, odor, vibration or similar objectionable features are confined to the premises and are in no way objectionable to the abutting property. Pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw five point three point two, industry light requires a special permit in the commercial district. Pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw five point four point thirteen, more than one principal use and/or principal building may be permitted on a lot in District C and District C two with a special permit granted by the zoning board of appeals in accordance with section five, eight point four point two of the Wellfleet zoning bylaws. Pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaws eight point four point two point one, the board finds, A, nearby land uses which include residential properties, restaurants, small retail establishments and the Cape Cod National Seashore will be damaged by having the proposed use nearby as the result of increased commercial vehicle traffic, construction noise and construction dust. B, the board determined that the uses of the site which would be displaced or preempted by this use to be not applicable. C, the property is located at the intersection of Old Warf Road and Route Six. Based on personal experiences and observations of the board members, this intersection is known to be dangerous. The board found that the increase in commercial truck traffic at this intersection caused by this application without additional traffic and safety controls would be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. D, this property is more sensitive than our most similarly zoned site to environmental damage from the proposed use. Applicant has already clear cut the site and destroyed the valuable natural vegetation on the property. Prior to the clear cutting of this site, the property was unimproved and vegetated. Furthermore, this site is located near residential structures and the proposed uses propose pose a risk to habitat disturbance and water contamination as a result of increased commercial vehicle traffic, industrial processing of natural materials on the site and general dust nuisance. Lastly, the applicant seeks to store soil and other materials extracted from throughout the region and has not provided to the board any plans relating to the potential groundwater or surface water contamination. Fourteen, pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw eight point four point two point two, the board finds the proposed use does not contribute to the diversity of services or housing opportunities available locally. The proposed uses on site would not be open to the public and would service only other contractors in the region. In addition, applicant indicates that this is to be a satellite property and that the majority of its overall commercial activity will occur in other municipalities. B, the proposed use may have a negative impact on seasonal congestion. Route Six is a major route to and from the Cape Cod National Seashore. The board found that the increase in commercial truck traffic on this route caused by this application would have a detrimental effect on peak period congestion. C, the proposed use would provide services to the regional construction market year round. D, the likelihood of year round employment at this property is minimal, minimal. According to the applicant, the property would employ only approximately two year round employees. The board found that this, this, C, E rather, the board found this section to be inapplicable because the applicant is not seeking to construct a residential development. Fifteen, pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw eight point four point two point three, the board finds this property abouts Old Warf Road, which is a scenic road. The proposed use did not considerably treat views from public ways and develop properties. While applicant proposes to install vegetative screening, it proposes to use native white oak tree plantings of at least two inch caliper. Such trees may not provide adequate screening during the fall and winter months when trees lack leaves. B, C, A directly above. C, the board found this section to be inapplicable because the property is not located near the shoreline. Sixteen, the board further finds, A, the bulk storage of sand, loam and topsoil on the property will likely result in dust that will not remain on the property. B, the screening of loam and topsoil will likely result in dust that will not remain on the property. C, the screening of loam and topsoil will likely resist loud noises from construction equipment that will not remain on the property. Seventeen, applicant has not provided the board with a dust mitigation plan, a noise mitigation plan or adequately, adequately explained how applicant will keep dust and noise from leaving the property. Given the proximity of residential structures to the property, the board determined that the proposed uses do not conform to the general purpose of the commercial district as found in Wellfleet zoning bylaw three point two, which permits business development but at the same time avoiding the creation of hazards or congestion. Eighteen, applicant has not provided the board with any plans regarding, relating to drainage on the property. Furthermore, in light of the significant heavy commercial trap, vehicle activity proposed on the property, applicant has not provided the board with any plans, policies or procedures relating to the containment and remediation of oil, petroleum products or other harmful substances that may be accidentally discharged from the equipment. Getting there, nineteen, the board finds that the property lacks adequate internal circulation to accommodate a front end loader, two one-ton trucks, two ten-wheelers, two skids, sears, one excavator, one small tilt-top trailer, one large tilt-top trailer, at least two employee personnel vehicles and any other vehicles that may visit the site. The lack of adequate internal circulation is based in part on the representation that the applicant will be bulk storing materials in various locations on the property and using the aforementioned heavy construction equipment to process and move the materials. Applicant has failed to present a parking plan for all vehicles or a site circulation plan showing how the equipment will be moved on site. Twenty, after considering the district objectives for the zoning district as provided for in Wellfleet zoning bylaw three point two, namely preserving or enhancing landscaping, minimizing visibility of parking areas and avoiding creation of hazards or congestion and the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet zoning bylaw eight point four point two, the board finds that the applicant has failed to demonstrate that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and its vicinity. For the application. Those are the findings. I need a motion to accept the findings.
I'll make a motion to accept the findings.
I need a second?
A second.
Okay, and I need a vote. Jan?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Yes, now I need a motion to deny the special permit.
I'll make a motion to deny your special permit.
And Andy?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
And Sharon, yes. All right. We've done it. Okay, thank you, Ben. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. My board, you have no, we have no minutes to record because we were still trying to sort through them all from last time. So we'll probably have two sets of minutes together. Since we have, and Chris, I will get these three findings over to you in the morning. And then you can file them all together. And because we finished this one tonight, board, we do not have a meeting on April twenty-second because we have no new cases.
Excellent.
So there's some benefit to work, to working till ten, ten forty-six at night.
We get overtime.
They're gonna turn into a pumpkin.
I want to thank town council for being with us through this. I may call on you to, to make sure, to check my findings one more time before I make them final, but thank you very much for that.
And the building inspector too for staying with us all.
Building inspector has been a a rock through it all. Thank you, Mr. Building Inspector.
Thank you.
Okay, see, with nothing else, I just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I see that Attorney Zender seems to have his hand up.
Oh, it was Attorney Zender. Do you have your hand up? All right, ask him to unmute again. Now unmute Ben so he can get his hand up. There he is, okay.
Well, I wanted to thank the, well, first of all, you thanked everybody but me.
Actually, Ben, that's not true. I thanked you first.
Oh, I missed that, I'm sorry.
You were first.
I just wanted to thank the board for your time on this. It was, it was a tough one, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I can get a motion to adjourn.
All right, I make a motion to adjourn.
I need a second.
Second.
All right, and all in favor, Al?
Yes.
Andy? Did he already leave? Andy, you must say aye.
No, I said yes.
Oh, okay, you said yes, I'm sorry. Trevor?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Sharon? Yes, who did I miss?
Me.
Nick? Nick, you made the motion.
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right, we're done.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you very much, Sharon. You did a great job. Thank you. It was a tough one.
Yes, it was a long night. It was a long night, yeah. Chris, I'll stay on for a second and just see if I can find my paperwork so I can make sure I have it for you.
Okay, dear.
Yep. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Feel free to give me a call or email if you'd like to discuss.
Sure, I probably, I'm no doubt, no doubt I will.
Very good, talk to you soon.
Talk to you soon, thank you.
Good job, Sharon.
Thank you, my dear. We can stop recording, actually, because kick that recording off.